It is May 6th, I am calling the Finance Committee to order. I'll start with a roll call. I'm gonna go around the screen, myself, Mary Hartman, Christine Reynolds.
Here.
Phil Swain.
Here.
Brian Taylor.
Here.
Andrea Zoll.
Here.
Parrishar Patel.
Here.
Ray Andrews.
Here.
Dick Jamison.
Here.
John Hickling.
Here.
Kathy Kocolo.
Here.
Lois Wasoff.
Here.
Greg Goriello.
Here.
And I believe that's it. No, wait.
Dee.
Dee Ortner?
Yeah.
Here.
Great, okay, good. Okay.
Mary and Chris, Tom Kearns from the CPC needs to be let into the meeting.
Thank you. Chris, can you let him in, please?
Yep, I got him.
Okay, so the first order of business for tonight's FINCOM meeting is obviously the public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, moved.
Do I have a second? I'll go around again by the screen, myself, Mary Hartman, yes. Christine Reynolds.
Yes.
Phil Swain.
Yes.
Brian Taylor.
Yes.
Andrea Zoll.
Yes.
Parrishar Patel.
Yes.
Ray Andrews.
Yes.
Dick Jamison.
Yes.
Don Hickling.
Yes.
Kathy Kocolo.
Yes.
Lois Wasoff.
Yes.
Greg Goriello.
Yes.
Dee Ortner?
Yes.
Dean Banfield.
Yes.
And I think I have all of the FINCOM members. Great, okay, good. I'm gonna begin tonight's hearing, repeating some of the comments that I made at our hearing last Thursday. Welcome to the third public hearing in support of the January, June 13th town meeting. This is the second hearing that will be hosted by the Finance Committee. The first was the Select Board and the last will be the Planning Committee. These are hearings, and the purpose of the hearings are to let the sponsors hear from the public, hear their comments, hear their questions, and with that information that they gather here by listening to the public, they are able to possibly modify their article, they're able to prep for questions they might get on the floor of town meeting, they're able to write information that will be collected and distributed at town meeting, and these comments and questions also inform the Select Board and the Finance Committee when they're discussing and voting their recommendations on specific warrant articles. The technology that we'll be using tonight is the webinar technology, and what that means is that the Finance Committee members and the sponsors, when they're presenting, will be visible. The public will be visible when they ask a question or have a comment. So if you have a question or a comment, simply type it in the Q and A section, you'll be recognized and then you'll be made, you'll be elevated with video privileges and we'll be able to see you. Other than that, thank you for being here. This is an important part of our democratic process. I wanna make one more comment, which I'm forgetting right now, but let me think about it for a minute. I think we're all set, really. The first, does anybody have any questions before I start? Again, any questions, just click it into Q and A. Greg, we've got Nancy Nelson, who's a CPC member, who would like to be led into the video, please.
Okay.
The other thing that we will do tonight periodically is I'm hoping that everyone can see the number of participants down at the bottom of their screen, and periodically we'll be announcing how many people from elected committees are in the audience as well. So the first article is Article 34, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee, and who is here to speak for the Community Preservation Committee?
I am Tom Kearns' chair.
Thank you, welcome, Tom.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Kearns, Chair of CPC, and I'm very pleased to present Warren Article 44 this evening. It's been a pleasure working with such a dedicated committee, and we are also shepherded by Heather Gill, and Matt Johnson has been our Select Board liaison and has been with us every step of the way and done a great job, and thanks, I've got some committee members here this evening with me, so I really appreciate that. Chris, thank you for the slides. So we'll get right into it. Next slide, please. So I won't read all the text of all the slides, but there's some that I should and some I'll summarize. And so the appropriation recommendations, Article 34, "To determine whether the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,769,891 or any other sum from the Concord Community Preservation Fund, of which up to $44,172 shall be appropriated from the prior year undesignated fund balance as of June 30th, 2020, and up to $1,725,719 shall be appropriated from projected fiscal year 2022 fund revenues in accordance with Chapter 44B of Massachusetts General Laws to be expended under the direction of the town manager as printed in the warrant." Thank you, Chris. And the Community Preservation Act in Concord, it's a 1.5% surcharge out of a possible 3% on real estate property tax bills. The first $100,000 of taxable value is exempt. Persons with income less than 80% area median income are exempt, and seniors with income of less than 100% area median income are exempt, and locally raised funds are matched on a percentage basis by funds in the State Community Preservation Fund, and that probably runs around 17% to 18% this year. Okay? Thank you, Chris. And here's a little pie chart. I'll start at 12 o'clock and work my way clockwise. Community housing, $288,880, and administrative allocation of $40,000, historic preservation, $576,511, open space appropriations of $559, $750, and recreation, $304,750. And for community housing, historic preservation and open space, we've got a minimum threshold of 10% of available funds that would go to each of those, and these meet that minimum threshold. Thank you. And this year CPC recommends funding for 15 applications. They're listed here, I'm not going to read them, but you can see a wide variety of applicants, all did an excellent job in working with the committee to make their case and receive a recommendation. So we'll now walk through them individually, because we can go to the next slide. So the first one is the Housing Production Plan Update, and this is required every five years, delayed one year, as you can see, with regard to the census, and the funding recommendation by CPC is $30,000. Okay? Regional Housing Services Program, Intermunicipal Program, providing professional housing services, and our recommendation is $25,000. Affordable Housing Buy Down. Okay, this is to create or transition at least one unit of affordable housing through the buy-down process. This is, creates a fund, so groups can move quickly if there are opportunities to make an affordable unit come into being, and our recommendation is $233,880. Thank you, Chris. Emerson Field Flagpole, rehabilitation of the flagpole, and you can see here the various care that's required, and our recommended funding is $14,250. Next, please. And this is 110 Walden Street, often known as the Concord Home for the Ageed, or the Timothy Wheeler House, Phase 3, there's been some previous funding, and this is to fund major projects, including roof replacement, other major architectural elements, structural elements of the building, and repairs and painting to all of the windows, and our recommended funding is $185,000. 58 Monument Square Roof Replacement and Historic Structures Report. Here you can see an aerial view of the roof in question, removal of the existing roof and replacement with a simulated slate roof that has been through historic districts committee. Our recommended funding here is $107,261. Okay, the Wright Tavern. This includes consultation services, structural repairs, and other miscellaneous repairs to things like chimney, brick, repointing, et cetera, to sustain this treasure of a building. The applicants have done a very, very nice job working with the committee to refine their proposal, and our recommended funding is $260,000. The Chamberlain Park Bridge, this is for survey and permitting of the existing bridge that essentially connects Chamberlain Park to the Kai's Road Municipal Parking Area, and this is for survey of the bridge and walkway, approval of NRC, and recommended funding is $35,000. Emerson Conservation Restriction. This is the purchase of a conservation restriction in the area between the Emerson House and Haywood Meadow, and as you can see here, it'll be restricted for conservation and passive recreation purposes, held by the Natural Resources Commission, and remaining a simple fee ownership of the Ralph Waldo Emerson Memorial Association, and our recommended funding is $210,000. Okay, thank you. The Wheeler Harrington House in Land, this is a recommendation to hire a consultant, a professional facilitator, to assist with a public outreach, public engagement in terms of, to determine the appropriate uses of this property and the facility. The recommended funding for the hiring of a professional facilitator is $20,000. Thank you. And White Pond Beach Improvements, modifications, this is really focused on accessibility. You can see here the details around accessibility, and stormwater and drainage improvements to improve the health of the pond and the utilization for all, and our recommended funding is $300,000. We have provided some funding for White Pond Beach in the past. I think, Chris, if you go to the next slide, this shows some of our recommended funding, $300,000 past CPA funding and other matching funds for a total project cost of $1.6 million. Okay, thank you. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, this is funding to provide additional landscaping, as you can see here, to enrich and enhance the visitor experience, and our recommended funding is $25,000. And Warner's Pond Dredging, this is also where we've made recommendations in the past for funding. This is a dredging project to improve the ecological health and recreation opportunities of the pond. You know, recommended funding is $250,000. And we may have one more exhibit here, yeah, that shows past CPA funding of $500,000. Okay? Old Rifle Range Survey and Permitting, this is to really look at a nearly impassable section of this trail section. These trails get a lot of use, and we want to make sure that they're accessible and safe, and our recommended funding is $34,500. And staff and technical support, I think, last but certainly not least, and as you can see here, funding for staff support, legal, and all the other support and supplies that go with that, including CPA signage, and our recommended funding is $40,000. And here we are back to the Article 34 overview. We are recommending this sum of $1,769,891 be considered by this group. If you have any questions, we'd love to entertain those, and we hope that will be supported in town meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. That was very efficient. Anyone else on the CPC want to make any comments? Seeing no hand raised, I think I'll open it up now for questions from the Finance Committee. I see Parrishar, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, Tom. That was very nicely done, by the way, good summary. How does the numbers, the requests this year compare to last year's? Increase, decrease, level?
Tom, you're muted.
That's a very good question. I think we are actually very close, but I think there, I may have some colleagues here that could be more exact in terms of what our total number was last year. If I've got any, anyone that would entertain that, but I think the total sum is very close to where we were last year, actually. We may have been slightly higher.
Are you all set, Parrishar?
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions from, oh, Heather. I think Heather has her, Heather and Nancy have their hand up.
Last year was $1,715,770.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, you've got your hand up. Would you like to say something? You're muted.
Sorry. Melissa Sawfield, who's Chair of Historical Districts Commission, or Historical Commission, is trying to get in, and so far hasn't been able to.
Thank you.
Just saying. That's all.
That's all you wanted to say. Okay. Okay, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a couple. Hi, Tom, it's been a long time.
Hi, Dee.
I have a couple questions for you. Let me see. In the H, which is the Chamberlain Park Bridge Survey and Permitting, is that for the placement of the bridge?
There, there's gonna need to be a reconstruction of the bridge. We're, I think the proposal is that many, if not all, of the existing piers that are in that sensitive environmental zone can be reused, but it's gonna have to be reconstructed and needs to be accessible, and so there's gonna need to be a pretty careful survey, because that's such a fragile area.
Okay, thank you. Another, I just have a couple more. In the number, or letter I, the Emerson Conservation Restriction, can you just please explain to me what the fee ownership means for the organization?
I don't know if we have any, any representatives here, and Heather may be able to help me with that question.
Okay.
Let me, let me see if I can ask Heather to help me with that.
I would hope Delia may be in attendance, and she would best be able to answer that.
Heather, I don't see her.
You may, just as a point of information, you may want to try to have some background information on that question or on that item?
Why don't we do a little follow-up on that? Yes, thank you, Dee.
Okay, and then, under L, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, where, do you know where the, where the enhancements are going to take place?
I don't, so we have reviewed that with the applicant. I don't know if I know the exact sites of those. I think that there's a series of areas that needs additional enhancements, but I'm not sure I could articulate the exact sites of those, and I don't know if my colleagues could, Kate, maybe?
Yep. Hi, sorry, I was waiting to be promoted. I can answer a couple of the questions going, going back to the Chamberlain Park Bridge. So one of the things that we need to, to look at there, and this is really under the Natural Resources, but there's a lot of crossover between that and some of our park planning, and so I reserve the right to have Delia, you know, add more, but de-watering is going to be a very large thing that we have to do, and it essentially makes sure that when we're putting the pylons into the ground and securing them, that we make sure that we're not disturbing the resource area around there, and so it's a very technical specification, which is why we need somebody that isn't from, necessarily from our own staff engineering division to be able to do that.
Gotcha.
And, let me see, the next question, I'm sorry, remind me, was about...
The enhancements, I think, for the Bruce?
For the Bruce Freeman. So really, most of what we're talking about there is the Phase 2B, which essentially picks up at where Junction Park is and leads out to the White Pond area, and mostly that signage, benches, and some other amenities that are, that are along the way that were always planned for, but certainly the dollar amounts that we had gotten in last year's didn't go necessarily as far as we wanted them to, and there was one more.
Emerson Conservation Restriction?
Correct, okay, thank you. And so that actually is being, this amount is being used in conjunction with the amount that we also have in the capital plan, and this has been proposed also the last two capital plans, and essentially it's the area that's between where the Emerson House is and the gun house is, and so that will have a permanent conservation restriction in perpetuity that will basically connect that road to the Emerson Thoreau Amble in the back.
So, Mike, in reading on the slide, I think it said the fee ownership was for the foundation, for the, for the, whoever owns the property.
Yeah, Ralph Waldo Emerson Memorial Association.
That's correct, yes. So, so we're essentially purchasing a restriction of property that is there.
But they still own the property?
That is correct.
They're funding it.
Okay. And then, Tom, my last question is letter N, which is, where is the Old Rifle Range?
Okay, this is...
That is right near Old Marlboro Road, if you're driving up, and actually if you were to cross over the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and get to the, to the, to the end of the 2B area as right before you hit where the middle school and the Willard School is, the entrance is right there.
I think it's across from Powder Mill Road.
Yeah, and not too far, I think, from the new site for the new middle school.
Sandborne, yes.
It's actually across from Williams Road, I believe, where it comes out.
Williams Road, okay.
And then the, the end of it actually comes out onto the area around Harrington Avenue, and so the idea is that it, once that's connected, it will connect over to the Assabette Trail that runs behind Harrington House and behind the farm that's there.
Oh, good, okay, all right.
And then it basically comes back out to Main Street where the Riverwalk is.
Okay. No more questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Andrews, you have a question?
Yeah, just where is the Wheeler Harrington House?
That's on 249 Harrington Avenue, and it actually is right next to Marshall Farm. So if you were to, you know, take a right onto Harrington Ave from Route 62, Marshall Farm would be on your left.
Okay.
Then there's a big field, and then right up a stonedust driveway is an old white farmhouse that has an arbor next to it, and that's the Harrington House.
I had seen it, okay, thank you.
You all set, Ray?
Yep, yes.
Great. Christine, I think you had your hand up?
Yes, thanks, Mary. Hi, Tom, thanks for your presentation, good job, and thanks for all the work that you and your committee did to come up with the list of proposed items. You spent a lot of time on the Wright Tavern request, both in terms of working with the requesting group, and then thinking about how this worked with other committees in the town, historical groups, and also thinking about how the project is gonna, what, what project guidelines you're gonna put in place, and I just wondered if you could maybe just spend a minute on some of the considerations and sort of how you ended up where you, where you are, because I think that was really quite a bit of effort for your group, and I think it might be worth just a little bit of discussion here.
Yeah, Christine, thank you so much for that question. Yeah, that was a relatively complex application. The original request was a larger dollar amount and covered maybe a wider scope of possible changes to the tavern. The tavern is incredible history and such a treasure that the committee did take some extra time to really understand the, the goals of the applicant, and how funding in, funding in this funding cycle would be applied to any changes, and so over the course of a number of months, we asked the applicants to be more and more focused around how a kind of this next initial phase would be applied in terms of any, any dollars that were granted would be applied to changes, to make that as focused as possible. And the, I think our applicants were fabulous, they really worked with us on that, and refined their scope of work, and ultimately decided to tailor their request to a smaller dollar number that we kind of worked back and forth with them on. The other aspect of that was what, that, an item that's been an ongoing discussion is to begin to develop a historic preservation restriction for the project, and that has been done in, in town before, but not often. This is such an important project and property that the committee felt that that was an important consideration, and that one that we continue to work with the applicant on. And I may have colleagues here from the committee that could also create some additional perspective.
Hi, this is Nancy Nelson. I could just emphasize what Tom said, that Wright Tavern is a national historical landmark, and there have been other historic preservation restrictions in town, not the least of which is the Thoreau Birthplace, and several others administered and overseen by different organizations and groups. Often this is overseen by, PR like this is overseen by the Historical Commission, but in Concord's case, several are overseen by the Select Board. So it's very important in terms of, you know, the town is investing probably soon close to or over $500,000 in Wright's Tavern, and since it's a national historical landmark, this seems warranted.
I guess maybe, if I may, just add another comment, and that is, with regard to the ultimate programming of the facility, I think that is continuing to be thought about and is continuing to evolve, and there are a number of directions that it could be taken in. What the CPC wanted to do was to recommend investment in stabilization of the existing building, and so there was, you know, as little deterioration as possible while the kind of ultimate direction of the kind of program was determined. So that helped us to kind of tailor the overall request to something that was really focused on initial stabilization.
Yeah, and the other thing is that the applicants have wisely added historic preservation specialists to their team, a historical architect, and an architectural, historic architectural conservator. So we think that'll bring good information to them going forward, and it's been great, it's an exciting project.
Good. Thank you, Tom. One other, one other point that maybe you could mention, and that's about the, particularly for the Finance Committee. uh, particularly for the finance committee, so the legal review that was done. And so just as you did last year, you had Anderson Krieger take a look at, uh, the projects, including this one, to make sure that there isn't anything that, um, either would be fall outside of the CPC mandate or, um, that you saw that others, someone could challenge it. And I know that given that this proposal came from, um, a religious organization, that's one that we've had questions on in the past. So could you just speak to, uh, yeah?
Christine, thank you so much for, yeah, for that question. Yes, we did have, uh, Anderson Krieger review all the applications as we, uh, got to a kind of a core group to move forward. And so they did an excellent job with that. And yes, this, uh, the, the stewards and owners of Wright Tavern, uh, First Parish are, uh, they, they determined that there was no, uh, conflict or anti-Aid, uh, issue, uh, related to this proposal.
Can I interrupt for just a minute? And we've got Tom Wilson, who's the Chair of the Wright Tavern Futures Task Force. Um, as a participant, I wonder, Chris, could you give Tom some privileges? Are you okay, Tom, Tom Kearns, if Tom Wilson weighs in here?
Oh, yeah, it would be delightful. It's been, it's been a very good partnership.
He's joining now.
Great. Tom Wilson, do you want to?
Thank you very much. I, I want to also echo what both Tom and Nancy have said about the, really the collaborative and learning experience that we had with the CPC. I just want to tell you a little bit about what's happening. We have made a commitment, First Parish has made a commitment to open the Wright Tavern to the public and to what we sometimes like to say, for it to take its rightful place in the history and the, the, the community. Um, it's been closed and been used for offices quite, for quite a number of years. And we're trying to develop a, a new direction for this future and one that will involve both a educational component about the history of the things that occurred there, as well as create a, a way for people to experience a 18th century tavern and the events that happened there. So we're on initiative to, to redefine it. It's going to take us a number of years because we need to make sure the building is structurally sound before we allow people to, to enter. But we want a commitment to do that. We're also, um, as of the next few weeks, setting up a separate, uh, 501(c)(c) organization, uh, c3 organization, and it's called the Wright Tavern Legacy Trust. And it will provide both governance as well as sources for funding and managing of the Wright Tavern. So it'll be more, a little more independent from the, from First Parish. It'll still be owned by First Parish, but we've got a, a great collaborative relationship all around. And we just look forward to working with a number of different groups as we open the Wright Tavern and open up for the community, as well as really sharing the, the history of the important events that happened there and the currency it has for today's times. And so I want to say, it's a pleasure to be working with CPC and we have a lot more to do with them.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I see a question from Dean Banfield.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy to hear all of the developments that have happened around Wright Tavern. As Nancy pointed out, the town has invested tremendously over the years. Uh, mostly we started with exterior findings, financing for windows and the roof. And now we're getting inside and looking at the structural characteristics of the building. So I'm, I'm very happy to hear from Tom Wilson that there is a development of a more public-facing characteristic to the, to the use of the building. So that's, that to me really settles some things. Um, I had, um, wanted to ask like how much money the town has now already put into it. Uh, Nancy gave us a ballpark on that, which is we're up to about a half a million dollars.
Not quite.
We have, uh, since we have, uh, Tom Wilson here, um, and, and others who have negotiated this year's number down, can we get a sense of what it's going to take to bring the, you know, to bring the building into the position where it might be able to take regular troops of students or, you know, busloads of visitors that can walk through it or enjoy it? Are we looking at another half a million? Or what do we, what do we think it's going to take to get this thing up to snuff?
Uh, thank you, Dean. Um, I can answer that in a general sense. Um, we have an, an initial study that was done a number of years ago. We've done some estimating on the cost, and it is closer to $750,000. But, you know, that's a, that's a, a loose number. Um, we decided with the CPC that we wanted to focus on really the critical priority on structural because we, we are worried about the building in terms of it's, you know, it's, it's safe now. But if, if you get a, some, some, you know, strong winds or some hurricanes or tornadoes or whatever, there's a lot of, the building is kind of fragile. And so we want to right now, under the priorities, and CPC has been wonderful, has supported us to just deal with the top priority structural issues. There are things that need to be also looked at, um, relative to the HVAC, to the insulation, to any kind of technology, et cetera. All of those things will be, um, engineered, if you will, in collaboration with different groups. And in particular, what Nancy mentioned, these, the historical architects who can make sure that what we're doing here, we preserve as much and, you know, what we can preserve about the building, to really, you know, keep it, um, in, in a, you know, situation where it's, it's, it is what it is and we're not having to modify it in order to make it sort of fancy. We wanted to keep it really, even in some ways, a, a real historical, uh, experience. So our estimate at this point in time is probably another half a million eventually. Uh, and we're going to be looking both for, to CPC, but also some other sources for funding or something like that. But we're at the early stages of this and we're getting organized and we're getting the team together and the board together and, and our resources together. And so it's, it's, uh, it's exciting, um, with lots of hope, lots of vision. Um, and we'll be coming back and say more about the actual numbers, um, as we get some real clarity about what can we do, what's really needed and to do it in a phased way. So we see it, you know, perhaps over, one thing we want to do is sort of, um, uh, wait until we have a substantial enough funding, perhaps, you know, maybe double what we have right now. If this gets approved, to really do some of the work before we remove the tenants that are currently occupying it and then put together. So it's more likely to happen in 2022, when we like, we'll start the actual, um, repair work. But what we're trying to do with it is with an idea that, I mean, you all probably all know about the, the Rev 250 that's coming and there's going to be a number of reenactments in Concord. We want to be very active in that event, in those events. And so we want to have the place ready to go by then. And time will fly. So we're trying to work really hard to get that done.
So I, I just want to say thank you. Um, I really feel as though this building could really take its place among some of the gems of Concord, the Alcott House, the Old Mans, the Barrett Farmhouse. This is really, uh, a centerpiece of all of that history. And, uh, to bring it into a, a, a place where the public can really get a chance to appreciate what it is, uh, is really going to be great. So thank you for that.
That's, that's what we're going to do. That's what we're, that's our commitment.
Very good. Brian Taylor, you had your hand up. Brian, you're, you're all set. Okay. Christine, you still have your hand up. Do you have a question? Go ahead.
I do. I have a, this question is kind of a process question, Tom. Um, so you, when you approve the projects, is there a timeline or a time limit associated for spending? I'm just trying to understand. So it's similar to what we were just talking about. So in the case of, I know Junction Village, you had several, um, uh, appropriations to them, but I know the money isn't spent yet in the same. So, so how do you sort of manage the spending down of the funds? How does that process work? Particularly when you have multi-year projects like this?
Yeah, yeah. So I think our, I'm, I'm going to look to Heather now. I think we're, we look at it like a 30-month horizon. Um, and we ask for biannual reports or, uh, reports every six months from our, from our applicants' active projects. Uh, so we are tracking, uh, the progress. And of course, they're, uh, seeking reimbursement payments for, uh, work completed and, and Heather administers that. Uh, but, uh, at our, uh, regular meetings, we're looking at our active project list. We are, uh, trying to track, uh, the progress that applicants are making. And then we will kind of work together with Heather if we, uh, need, uh, an, an applicant to, uh, come before us and give us a report, either, uh, give us a written report or actually appear and, uh, give us a sense of, uh, where the progress is. Uh, also, we look for the opportunities to close out projects. And if there are funds remaining, that those get returned, uh, to, uh, the CPC and the town funds. And so, uh, it's a, it's a, just an ongoing, uh, process. But we have typically, I don't know, three or four dozen projects that are active, maybe more than that.
Yeah, as I, when, when I looked at the latest report, it sort of, you know, went on, you know, there was, and probably COVID has an impact on this as well. So obviously 21 projects were open and active. There were a lot of 20 projects that were open and active. But there were also some back in 19, yeah, 2019, 2018 and so forth. And that's why I was sort of curious is to have, at some point, do you, when you, when someone comes in, do you say, we expect you to spend the funds within 30 months? Or is that not part of it?
And, and, uh, you know, they're obligated to give us reports on the progress that they're making. And if there's some change to that, then we need to, uh, take that into consideration and report that back to the town. Uh, but yeah, we're, we're tracking all active projects and, uh, trying our best to close them out as efficiently as possible.
Yep. And do you do that only as a committee or does someone from finance in the town also have access to that information?
Heather, you want to, you want to address that? It is a coordinated effort.
The Finance Department does manage and set up all of the accounts. Um, so they do have access to that information.
And are they monitoring, you know, progress, you know, when, when projects should be, or, you know, are supposed to be completed to see that they're done?
I don't believe that they, they track that information.
Okay.
I think they, I think they depend on, yeah, CPC and Heather to, uh, you know, to give them updates.
Yeah, so when a project is ready to be closed, I send a letter to the Finance Department to close that account for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for, for you, Tom Kearns. Uh, you mentioned that the state match is running about 17 to 18%. And I thought I had read somewhere that the Baker Administration had identified another source of funding. Did I, it, it, is that, do you think the 17 or 18% is going to go up? I guess is what I'm.
Yeah, I, I see Carrie maybe on the line here, who's probably, uh, the, the expert here that could address that. I, Carrie, would you?
Sure. Um, the, it is projected at about 25%. And that's already included in the amount that was provided to the committee.
So, so that's 25% for FY '22?
For FY '22, um, it, it was actually, it was for fiscal '21, it was actually 28.6%. And we're projecting it for '22 at, at 25%. So it, it might end up coming in a little bit higher. And the, the committee's recommendation is actually about $100,000 lower than the maximum projected amount available.
Okay, so the 1.7 includes a 25% match plus 100,000?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, Carrie. Um, I've got another question. The, um, 233,000 to the affordable housing, um, who has custody of that money? Is that going to be put into the, the fund that the town meeting voted for at, at last year's town meeting? Or who exactly has custody of that?
Okay, who's, yeah, Heather, can you answer that one?
So that would be the Concord Housing Development Corporation. It's, it's different friend than the fund that was set up last year.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see Dean, you have a question?
Yeah, simple question. The, the Timothy Wheeler, uh, Home for Older People, what, what's the organization that owns that? Is that owned by the town? Is that owned by a foundation? Or how is that administered?
Okay, so, uh, yeah, they have their own independent board. Um, the, the, uh, property is owned by the town and they have a, their own organization and board that, uh, administers their endowment and their funding.
So it's sort of like the Emerson?
Yeah, I see. Yeah, I need a.
Owned by the town for a $1 lease or something, but they have their own.
We have the expert here. I see you right here.
Okay.
Anita Tekli, I'm treasurer of, of the board. The property is, is not owned by the town. It's privately owned as it has been since, uh, 1887, I think. Um, and it is owned by the, uh, a private nonprofit corporation called Concord Home for the Aged. So the town has, has no financial ownership or, or otherwise. Uh, but it is, um, run as a nonprofit and, uh, we have a nine-member volunteer board of directors.
Thank you, Anita.
Any other questions from the Finance Committee? Diane, I see your hand up, but do you have a comment as a CPC member? Or do you have a question from the, the public?
CPC, I know I'm not, not here as a CPC member.
Go ahead.
Otherwise I couldn't be here. Um, Christine, I just wanted to, to say that I've been particularly interested this year because of the COVID situation, that quite a few of the projects that I think would have been far more advanced at this point have not been able to be so. And I think your question is, is pertinent, but it's also important that we've all had to exercise a little more patience because, you know, because of that. So thank you. That's all.
Yep. Thank you, Diane. No more questions from the Finance Committee. I think I'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments. I see one in the queue, Stefan Bader. Chris, can you give Stefan video privileges, please?
Yep, um, promote him now. Who's joining? Mr. Bader, you are on the panel.
Yeah, I just, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
I thought it would be helpful if you, um, added the context that you provided with the K and L items with the F and G items, in other words, to, to, um, put the spending this year's out. Sorry, this year's allocation in the context of the total project. Christine asked some questions that added that to the, um, First Parish Wright Tavern. But in terms of the Monument Square Roof Replacement, um, is this the first year or three? The last year or three? What's the context?
Yeah, Mary, can we get, uh, people's addresses also?
I'm sorry, 7th Road Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, Heather, do you want to tackle that one?
So the reason that the past spending wasn't included as in the other projects, um, is because this is the first request. Um, so for the Warner's Pond dredging, I included that graph just because CPC has allocated funds towards that specific project for dredging in the past. Um, CPC has not allocated funding towards a roof replacement at, um, 58 Monument Square or towards this specific project at, um, First Parish. And that's why, um, it wasn't, um, organized that way.
I, I think a statement to that effect, in addition to what's on your slide, would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's very good.
Thank you. Christine, do we have any other questions from?
No, we do not, Mary.
Okay. Any other questions from the? Okay, thank you very much for the CPC. Thank you.
You had her hand up there.
Yeah, um, we have, when you're talking about item F, the roof replacement, um, we have, this is the Masonic Corporation. We have, the CPC has funded that corporation in the past. So if, if that's the kind of information that Stefan Bader was asking about, I think you would need to have, you would need to include that.
If there was, uh, any funding in the past for any, any particular project?
Right. But specifically, you asked about the, the, um, Masonic Corporation. And we, the CPC did fund that several years ago.
Yeah, brick repointing.
That's correct. Brick repointing.
Yes.
Good point.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Dean.
Any other questions?
Yeah, hold on, I think, uh, no, we're good. We're good.
Well, we are?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, um, CPC members, thank you very much for being here tonight. We hope you heard something that can help you, um, with your materials for a town meeting. And thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you and good night.
Okay, next up on our agenda, the sponsor is the Minuteman Regional Technical High School Committee. Do we have a member from that committee?
I, I think Dr. Bukian is going to present tonight.
Yeah, but I was wondering if we had someone from the committee to introduce him.
Your representative, Steve Ladue, is in there somewhere.
Yes. Yes.
I'll get him now.
Bye.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Ladue, you are on the panel.
Stephen, you're muted.
There you go. That likes it when I'm muted, so. So at any rate, thank you for hearing us tonight. You know, it's been a very unusual budget year as it is for all the other entities because of COVID. And you know, I, I happen to be the, the chair of the Minuteman Finance Committee Subcommittee. So we, three members, we have oversight over the, over the budget and, and make a recommendation to the full school committee. So Dr. Beckillan is here this evening to present the, the Minuteman Budget for FY twenty-two. And, and I will turn it over to him.
Great.
Thanks. Um, okay, here we go. Chris. Thanks, Chris. So happy to be with you. Overall, if you break down our budget, our operating budget is up a modest two point four percent. Our, what we call our operating capital, which is part of the operating assessment is up about four hundred thousand. And our big increase in our FY twenty-two budget is our MSBA Project Debt Service, which we've been, it's no surprise. We've been preparing folks for this for about five or six years. Next slide, Chris. These are some of the revenue assumptions that we've been using since we began our budget process, which was back in October, November. And since we still don't have a state budget and there's been various amounts of numbers every year, we, we make some very conservative assumptions. You can see a slight decrease in Chapter seventy-eight. That's basically due to the exit of Belmont. Reductions in, in other Chapter seventy-eight, an increase in utilization of tuition that we're going to be collecting next year from non-member towns. And overall, our required member assessments is up, I think significantly, basically due to the, the increase in the debt service. Next slide, please. Some of the assumptions we've, we believe COVID will be with us in some form. We try to prepare for that. Absolutely keeping kids and staff safe is everyone's number one priority. It seems a little more optimistic that we may be getting some additional federal aid, perhaps even some additional state aid. Our final MSBA project bond has been secured. And one of the assumptions we've made, which is working out to be true, is that the growth in interest in CTE, Career and Technical Education, continues. So we're absolutely already looking at ways to increase capacity of the new school. We have already exceeded the design enrollment of the new school. Next slide, please. As of last week, you can see our total applications is about the same as last year. But our in-district applications is almost double from what it was five years ago. We still get district, out-of-district applications from eligible and ineligible towns. An eligible, out-of-district student application is a student application from a town that has no career and technical education available to it. And that's mostly from the towns that left and water town. So we have a waitlist for next fall, including in-district students. And we're anticipating we're going to be able to accommodate a larger capacity. Our school was designed for six hundred and twenty-eight students. We currently have six hundred and thirty-five. This fall, we're anticipating between six seventy and six eighty. And in three years, we expect to be around eight hundred. So we are accepting a, a class of two hundred in the fall. Next slide, please. Our priorities, as we said, safety and health. We are opening a new program. Animal Science and Vet Assisting is opening this fall. We're also expanding our Logistics Engineering Robotics Automation Program in the Logistics Engineering space. Our, another priority, as I just mentioned, is to increase capacity to finish and close out the MSBA project. Our athletic fields are, construction are underway. And as COVID restrictions begin to change, we hope to ramp up our facilities rental and, and corresponding revenue. Next slide. Some of the big drivers next year, increase in teacher salaries, our electric and heat utility increase. We're tracking that pretty carefully because that's a surprise to us. Maintenance contracts on the new systems in the building. Property insurance is up because the value of the new school is up. And for the first time in fifteen years, as superintendent of Minuteman, I'm reporting a decrease in health insurance, mainly due to an FTE reduction that we implemented due to COVID. And I'm, I'm holding that reduction. Transportation is down because it came in below we budget, what we budgeted in FY twenty-two, twenty-one, sorry. Next slide. So Concord's preliminary assessment is one point three million. That's an increase of about seventy-five thousand. Next slide. If you break out the assessment, these are the components of that assessment. A minimum required contribution, your portion of the transportation, the operating assessment. And Concord voted to exclude the debt from the building, but including that, it's one point three million. Next slide. This is the enrollment historical over the last fourteen years. Over the last three years, Concord enrollment has had held steady at twenty-five. Next slide. We're anticipating an increase in Concord students next fall. We received seventeen applications, sixteen were completed, twelve, sixteen offers of admission. Twelve Concord students have committed to enroll. So we're projecting thirty-six students. And I'll just remind you, that's, that thirty-six gets averaged with the last three years for your FY twenty-three assessment. So I'm just giving you a heads up that we are enjoying an increase in, in enrollment from Concord. Next slide. Just letting you know, our special ed enrollment continues to be high. We're very proud and pleased at the performance of our students, even though forty-six to fifty percent of our kids are on an IEP. And last year, a hundred percent of them, or year before last, because we didn't do MCAS, a hundred percent of these students passed MCAS on the first try. Next slide. We spend quite a bit on special ed. It's a big component of our budget. If you look at other vocational technical schools, we are certainly spending most, a lot of our budget on special ed. Next. Next. Just a little more detail on the capital debt increases. Our athletic fields, if you may recall, I came to you a while ago around some additional borrowing for lighting of our three fields. And that payment is budgeted in FY twenty-two. I, I think we got a ten-year note for less than two percent. So that's included. We're also going to be contributing to our capital stabilization fund. We've been fortunate in getting grants over the last few years for equipment. So our capital stabilization fund balance is fairly healthy. Next slide. I'll talk about that. Our athletic fields are underway. We expect to have them all done early fall, hopefully in September. We're setting aside a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. So in ten years, when we have to replace the fields, we won't have to go to the towns for that money. It'll be in the capital stabilization fund. Next slide. Oh, our photovoltaic roof installation. I won't give you the long story. I'll give you the short story. It's being installed now. And so we were able to secure two million dollars of reimbursement that we always counted on by getting this, of this roof installation contract signed, permitted. And it's actually under construction right now. It's a twenty-year lease purchase. We'll be saving between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Next slide. That's just a breakout of the capital and operating and the building project debt showing a total increase in our budget, if you include everything, of eight point four percent. Next slide. OPEB, fun and wonderful OPEB. Minuteman has like a big OPEB liability of thirty-two point five million dollars. Over the last five years, we've been putting a little bit of money in there, fifty thousand a year. FY twenty-two, we'll put sixty thousand a year. The Minuteman Finance Subcommittee has looked at this in the long term. And we currently also pay for an ESCO tax-exempt municipal lease that we took out back in two thousand and nine that all sixteen towns are paying for, even though we only have nine towns in the district. But that debt is going to be retired in FY twenty-five. That's about four hundred thousand dollars a year that we'll be able to put towards our OPEB liability. So we have a plan for the long term, but it's, it's, it's a big block of ice to chip away at. Next. Here's just a re, summary of the budget. Next. Then this is Concord's assessment. And I believe the next is questions. Yes. Thank you.
I'm on mute. Thank you very much, Dr. Beath. I've got, I'm going to open it up to finance committee questions, but I have a question to begin with. First, I think it's great news to see that you've got a waitlist. I've driven by your school. It's really impressive. But I'm wondering, is to go from the current six hundred plus students up to eight hundred, did I hear you say that? Are you going to have to do some kind of a capital? Plan, I mean, are you going to need capital in order to make some kind of an expansion to your facilities?
We're going to be in, thanks for the question, Mary. I really appreciate it. And, and don't drive by, stop in sometime. I'll give you the floor. Yes, we have three projects prioritized that would give us that capacity. And let me just back up a little bit. If you, you know, we're a CTE school, so the MSBA has certain formulas for the shop spaces, the lab spaces where students who are in their career and technical education programs are. And then they have formulas and requirements for the academic spaces. And so when you look at our building, what we actually built, what's on the ground now, and you look at the square footage requirements and recommendations under Chapter seventy-four, which is the body of law that governs career and technical education, we could hold eight hundred and fifty students just in the vocational shops. When you look in at the academic week, that's where the bottleneck is. We do not have enough academic classroom space. So we are looking at three projects. One is to, we had a building on the north side that we were going to use for storage. We're converting it to a metal fab shop. And that will free up some space. And then we're looking at a building that we have on site, which was formerly used as a daycare center. It's sixteen thousand square feet. We're looking at renovating that building to house additional classroom space as well as our veterinary clinic. We're going to have an operating vet clinic there. It's as you come in the building near the Cranberry Hill site. So we have priced out the first project at around seven hundred thousand. And we believe we have that money in our capital stabilization fund. And I believe we're going to be saving some money in our athletic fields. And then we have some grants out. The second project is the renovation of the, of the Tremont School. We have architects helping us price that now, but our intention is to not to go back to the towns to not borrow any additional money. Over three to four years, I believe we can add that capacity on our own, on our own campus. And if you think about it, we're a vocational technical school. So I have a carpentry shop, an electrical shop, a plumbing shop. So it's going to be a great on-campus project for the kids.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I see hands raised. I'm going to start with Dick Jameson. Dick?
Hi. You had mentioned surprise at the heating and electrical costs. And I wonder if you could just give us a little detail around that.
Yeah. When I say surprise, you know, back about five years ago, we had to project what our budget would be for this fiscal year, including operations, utilities, teach, the whole thing. And what we found when we got into the building, and I'll just remind you, we got in the building, excuse me, in September of two thousand and nineteen. In March of two thousand and twenty, we had to leave. And we haven't even been in the building fully occupied yet. So in addition to this being, we, we've had to have the HVAC operating at a high level to make the air exchanges and come in line with what COVID safety recommendations were. And we haven't had the bodies in the building. So we think some of this might be because of COVID, where we've had to operate the, the systems more without the people in the building. And we also had some adjustments. We've been commissioning this system as we go along, which has been a challenge because the system was designed to have a full operating school and we haven't had one yet. So that's why I want to make sure we have in the budget what we've been experiencing the last twelve months. And hopefully we'll get a better handle on it because it should have been cheaper than what we're experiencing.
Okay, thank you. Greg Goriello.
Yeah, Dick got my first question. Thanks, Dick. The second one I got is, can you walk me through the, the enrollment numbers again? I didn't get how you got to thirty-six from, from the twenty-five, just from that slide for, for the Concord individuals?
Yeah, I don't know if Chris wants to bring that slide up, but for the last three fiscal years, Concord has twenty-five kids. Next year, we're expecting thirty-six Concord kids.
Is that total? Is that just for the class and like sort of the freshman class entering?
That would be the total for four years.
Got, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Great. You all set, Greg? I'm Parrishar.
There are two quick questions. One is on the enrollment. I saw that there was a waiting list for kids from in-district schools.
Yep.
And my question is, what's the priority order for kids in district versus those towns that dropped out of, in the first place? Do the in-district kids actually have priority?
Yes.
And, and so then how do you get a waiting list for kids in district versus enrolling folks from out-of-district towns?
They miss the deadlines.
Okay. So it's the responsibility of the family and the student.
We have February fifteenth is a hard deadline. And I think families are finally starting to realize that.
Yep.
But we're required by our admissions policy, and it's in state regulation now, that we must give priority to in-district applicants by the deadline set. After the deadline passes, everybody's on a waiting list.
Okay, thank you. And then just to go back to OPEB for a minute, I, I don't know much about OPEB. But does OPEB, is OPEB liability still growing? Or I'm assuming it still grows or no?
It grows slightly. We had a big jump in it. Maybe Steve can explain it better than me, but we had a big jump from one year to the next. In do, from what I could understand from the auditors, in large part because of the, the building project and the additional debt that the whole system is under. I don't understand it either, Presh. I, you know, I'm only the superintendent. I hire good business people.
Maybe I can just ask my question. I'm kind of curious. If the liability is growing, is it growing faster than the fifty thousand you're paying off?
I think so, absolutely.
Okay. And any sense of how much faster it's growing than the fifty thousand?
It took a jump and it's pretty level now because our staffing is leveled out.
Okay.
Are you all set, Parrishar?
I'm also, thank you.
Okay. Christine, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Mary. Superintendent, I have a question. I, I'm a little fuzzy on my recollection, but I think, and I think I saw it in one of your slides, that there's an offset to member towns from debt payments that are made or debt assessments that are made to non-member To member towns from debt payments that are made or debt assessments that are made to non-member towns. And I think over time, that's probably going to fade away, but I, I did see it in, in your, one of your slides there. Could you just speak to that? Were you or Steve or somebody speak to that?
Are you referring to the ESCO project?
No, no, there was a, there's a, there was some.
Capital fee.
The capital fee, that's what it is, right? So the capital fee that we charged, you charged to the non-member towns. So that's an offset to member town assessments. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. And do we anticipate that we're going to have that going forward as, as this, you know, as the enrollment continues to decline? Is that going to be something that puts more pressure on, on assessments to member towns?
Yeah. Absolutely, it will. Yeah, we are, we are filling the school with in district students. We will not be enjoying out of district revenue from capital fees nor from tuition fees. Nor from special ed fees. We anticipate probably in four to five fiscal years, there will be zero revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the finance committee? Dr. B, I wonder if you could educate me a little bit about the lead reimbursement that you got for the photovoltaic cells? Could you just tell us how that works?
Very simply, MSBA has. Different levels of lead of, I forget what lead, lead stands for anymore, but it's an energy. Efficiency of your building. Some you may hear about platinum. Or gold. Well, when you look at the investment that you have to make for those higher levels of lead certification, it really doesn't make sense for. Public school entity. So we were always trying to hit our, I think it's silver lead. And if we hit that. With a number of points. Then we got the $2 million. And so you get points for a variety of things. Certainly the efficiencies of your system, the design. Innovation. I didn't mention solar block in the work we're doing with a new startup company. That's going to help us build our third thing. We got a few points for that. And then we got a lot of points for having a photovoltaic green energy system. Contributing. A minimum level. I think we're 250 kilowatt system going on the roof. Then the materials that you use. There's all kinds of. Formulaic variables for different things you can do to achieve. Lead certification.
Okay, but the money is coming from the MSBA?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. I've got a question. Ray, Ray, you've got your hand up with. Ray Andrews?
Yeah. Intriguing, you're saying that it seems like less students in the building. Increases the energy costs. Is that you're counting on body heat from a number of students?
That's, that's what my engineers told me, you know, because we designed the system.
Okay. Yep, okay.
Thanks, Ray. Dean, do you have a question?
Yeah, we're, we're in the process here in Concord of going through the construction of a new building eventually. I've just, my question is, you did, we're just hitting kind of the peak of debt service for this building right now. And what is the, what is the, the length of the bond? And what's the payment structure? Is it, is it a level? Level principal each year? So it's a declining balance, you know, declining assessment? Or is it a level assessment through the, through the arc of the bond?
Well, we, we've borrowed in four different. Timeframes. So we've just completed our final borrowing. So it's been a little, it's been escalating, going up. And I believe we're fairly level going out for a number of years. There's a strange little bump about 12 years out. And then it continues to decline. It's a 30-year term. And the interest rate for each set of borrowing was different. I believe the last. Bunch of borrowing we got was 1.8%. And we've been applying the premium from those to the principal. So in other words, we're. Taking that premium upfront and putting it towards the principal. So at the tail end of this, it'll, it'll. Decelerate pretty quickly because of how we've been managing. The lower interest rates that we've been able to receive. We always planned for. Conservatively and fortunately or unfortunately. However you view it. The interest rates have been favorable for us and for our member towns. Thank you.
Parrishar, I see your hand up. Do you have another question?
I do. I'm sorry, just very quickly. I'm kind of curious, Dr. B, what is the high school's? Minuteman's policy with respect to renting out. The basketball courts and other facilities to non-school organizations? Are they generally? Full or, or do you have trouble renting them out? Or can you just provide a little bit of? Color there. The context is, of course, we're. In the middle of trying to design a new middle school and there's been. A request to modify the designs, particularly the gymnasium and the auditorium. To accommodate non, I guess, non-school related organizations and teams. And so I'm kind of curious what your policy is and what your experience has been like. In the, in the demand for, for that space.
That's a great question. So we haven't really had any experience yet because. COVID hit few months into the building and the first few months we were in it. I wasn't going to let anybody else in because we're still. Testing systems and learning the building, but. Previous to this in our old building, we always had a pretty robust. Revolving account that was funded by rentals. We have. In the new building, we, I have had to. I don't want to say beat people away, but I. There is incredible demand. For inside spaces. And if you come to our school and. We have some incredible spaces. Of course, we have a gym, we have a student union, we have corporate meeting rooms. We have a fully functional technical professional theater. You know, we have a daycare center, a restaurant. Plus, we're going to have three athletic fields, all fully lit. So we're anticipating. You know, a pretty robust rental revenue. This summer, I'm, we're really saving the school. I only have one camp. Letting in and then the Celtics want to practice there for a week, so I'm letting them do that.
When would that be, by the way?
Pardon?
When would that be?
It's in July. They wanted four weeks and I told them no. You know, it's the kids. We, we want, the, the summer is going to be an extension of this year. And a beginning, a fresh start for next year. So we're dedicating the whole school campus pretty much. To accelerated learning. Credit recovery, filling the gaps. Giving kids some social emotional time. We've got a grant from the state to work with a camp. With our kids to help the rising eighth graders who are coming in as ninth graders. So I, I'm really hoping we're going to have. We're going to make a lot of money off of it, but. There's a huge demand. I, I. I always knew there was, but when the new school opened up, we're getting calls from all over. Really Eastern Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mary.
Any other questions from FinCom? Okay, I'll open it up to the.
I just have one last question on that.
Go ahead.
Why, why do you think that the professional teams are calling?
They're, they run camps. So some of the teams do camps for kids.
Yeah.
And the Celtic players come and. Do talks and stuff.
So they want to do a camp at your school?
It's the location. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, I think I'll open it up now to the public. I see Matt Johnson. Do you have a question?
Mr. Johnson, you're on the panel.
Thank you. Yeah, so it was quite eye opening to hear about that OPEB liability. Just in comparison with Concord's OPEB liability, you know, our liability is around 60 million. So this school is, you know, over half of what our whole town's OPEB liability is and. And a part of ours is funded. I mean, we have 21 million funded. Out of that. And we're making contributions of almost one and a half million. To the OPEB trust fund. So. You know, the incidental kinds of contributions that are being made as part of the budget here. Just as a member town, you know, I'm really concerned. It's like we suddenly here have. You know, three and a half million more OPEB liability in effect. Because this is ours in part. And I think we need a serious plan. To get at it, even moving to that 400,000 is really not going to get the ball down the field. Really, we, we need a plan here.
Absolutely.
Steve, do you want to respond to that at all?
I, I, I don't disagree with that, but I think. One of the dynamics of the district is that we have. Some of our more heavily populated, the student towns like Lancaster. They. They're really getting hit hard by an assessment. So as, as a school committee. We kind of have to try to reach compromises on how we, how we do the budget because. You know, we don't need any more other towns pulling out. So. You know, I agree, we need to get a little more aggressive on OPEB, but you know, we have to weigh kind of the politics of the situation too with. Eight other communities, nine communities altogether.
As they pull out, these other towns don't. Have to pay in their share of the OPEB liability as it was at that time, right?
Right.
So we're kind of left holding the bag.
Right.
It's, it's not a good situation.
Right, but you know, as I, as I said, it's, it's, it's a dynamic that. You know, we're trying to address and you know, we will, as, as chair of the finance committee will be. You know, trying to come up with a plan on it.
Yeah, 50, 60K is not adjustment.
Right.
Thank you, Matt. Chris, do we have any questions?
Yes, we do, Mary. Carmen Reese has a question.
Carmen. Chris Carmody, can you give Carmen video privileges, please?
Yes, Reese, you are on the panel.
Oh, hi, thanks. I, I think my question was already answered, actually.
I did too.
Was whether. Whether any of the former member towns had any responsibility for the OPEB for the years that they were members. It, it sounds like they do not, which is interesting because I think that. I, I don't think that's the case in all retirement situations. I think there is some sharing between towns for. Employees who move from town to town. I don't know. Seems like that might call for a legislative solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Any other questions from the public?
Nope.
Parrishar, do you have a question that you'd like to?
I do, and I guess it's just following up on this OPEB stuff. Is there a way to ask for the Concord FinCom to actually formally ask the committee? To look into this and come back to us with. Sort of the state of the situation. I think we've gotten some. Clarity here in terms of who's got liability for this, the towns leaving, they don't have liability. It's, I agree, it's a little concerning. That's why when I asked the question. 50,000 is nothing and frankly, even 400,000 take 80 years to pay off. And so is there a way to formally ask for? Some report back in terms of this is our plan to address it, at least look into it? I'm not saying you come up with $3 million a year to pay it down, but something that. Gives us confidence that there's a plan going forward.
Well, I would suggest that you've already made the request. You have the chairman of the Minuteman FinCom here. And you have the superintendent. So we'll take that back to the FinCom.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Christine?
Nope, you're good.
Thank you, Dr. B. Thank you, Stephen. I hope this was helpful to you. It certainly was helpful to us.
Mary, I think Dean has his hand.
We used.
Yeah, just, just returning to the OPEB question. The 50, which is, you know, a drop in the bucket against 32 million is one thing, but. In terms of the liability for the current year. Is that a pay as you go kind of thing as you're, you know, as, as, as the bills are coming due, they're, they're part of the budget, so they are being paid. And this, and, and you know, what we've heard here is that we're actually not actually even covering the current liability. And that that OPEB. Liability is growing. Is that, I just want to kind of get a, some clarity on that.
Steve, are you gonna? Well, I mean, the only thing I was gonna, I was going to say, and you know, I'm, I'm the new chair of the, of the FinCom, but. In my prior life as a town manager. What we had done in Acton was. We applied an OPEB factor for new hires. So for example. If we hired a new hire, brand new, brand new position, we would annually budget an additional. I think $15,000 at the time for that position. So it made the OPEB neutralized. In that, in that regard. So you know, as we talk about how we're going to strategize in the future. I think that might be one of the things is, in addition to trying to pay it off, is to try to neutralize the current impact as well, especially when you bring on new people. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, seeing. No further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Concord Public School budget. Do we have someone from the Concord Public School School Committee?
Here.
To.
Cynthia Raines here. She's vice chair.
Yes.
Cynthia.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I would thank you for having us tonight. We made it through another very unusual year and I, but I think it was a great collaboration with the finance committee, so I really appreciate that. And I know all the other Concord School Committees members feel the same way. I, I hope you've had a chance to see the great budget book that has just come out. It is available on the district website, so I encourage everyone to go take a look. It's very thorough and complete. And I want to thank Jared and his team. They did a great job. And Dr. Hunter as well. I'm sure she was involved. I, the only other thing I would like to say is that if people are watching the video and they didn't get a chance to ask a question, please. Send your questions to the Concord School Committee. You'll be happy to address them. So I hand it over to Dr. Hunter, Mr. Stanton to go through the Concord budget and the Concord capital plan.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Dr. Hunter. Everyone. We're just glad to be back. We've been here a couple of times with the budget numbers. We are coming in at guidelines, so I think that's a great starting point to the conversation. Jared's going to give you the high level slides. We're happy to answer questions. Either to what's on the slide or what's on the, in the budget books. And I think from there, I'll turn it over to Jared.
Jared, I think you're muted.
You're on mute, Jared.
You're still on mute. I see the finger up. I think.
I know, he's working on it.
My apologies. I've had computer issues all week and I'm using a tablet and I'm not very good at it, clearly. Chris, can I ask you to promote Ian Raines if you wouldn't mind, just so he's the panelist?
Sorry, I'll let him know.
Excellent, thank you. Well, hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. So I will go over these slides and Laurie, feel free to jump in at any time. So as you know, the recommended budget for FY22 is $41,708,424. That was voted by the school committee on March 16th, 2021. The overall budget is $931,231. Or 2.28% higher than FY21's approved budget. Next slide, please. At the time, we had been looking at all the scenarios that could be on the table for the fall. Initially, we budgeted for all of them, but then we had to try to accommodate for all of the options, knowing that we would have to pick a preferred option. Once we were able to do that, the budget really started to come together. The first would be that everyone isn't back, is, is back in person, perhaps with some modifications. Now that students are back full time, we chose the correct option. CARES Act monies in emergency relief money will be spent on unknown costs next year. This budget also does not include student supervisors, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars. Substitute and professional development lines were fully replenished. And lastly, software was broken out by department level and will be managed by the teaching and learning department. And it's important to point out that about 80% of the. And it's important to point out that about eighty percent of the software used is either because of COVID or assisted for remote learning.
Jared, could I just update a bit on where we are at in the schools with COVID? Um, we did return all K-five students full-time. They were already in through the uh morning, five days a week, so we just extended the day. Uh, so that we know we'll go forward into the fall. Uh, on the twenty-sixth, two weeks ago, we returned the middle school full-time. Um, so all students are back in full-time every day. Uh, clearly spacing is less than it was. Um, and we've had to adjust our our safety protocols accordingly. We do still have a number of students learning remotely. We've uh allowed the per-state direction, allowed that option for kids to still remain fully remote. Um, our numbers are extraordinarily low compared to our colleagues around um local districts that I've been talking with. We have ninety-five percent of our kids in person, uh five percent remained fully remote. So that's that's a low number compared to other communities. What we don't know, and I think this is still worth noting, because this is still an unknown for us, what we don't know is what the requirement will be for remote options in the fall. Um, you know, it's interesting to look at these slides we made in the the winter and see where we are now, because things have definitely evolved. You know, vaccinations are going to drive a good amount of this. We're uh eagerly awaiting uh the CDC, FDA approval of the twelve-to sixteen-year-old vaccine. We expect that imminently. Um, that will dramatically impact the middle school, at least some portions of the middle school. Um, we suspect seventh and eighth grade will benefit most from that. Uh, the little guys, their vaccine is likely not available. I don't know. You know, we keep listening to all the experts try to predict. It's it's a it's a possibility. We're talking winter of twenty-two, you know, this coming January or so, which obviously leaves us deep into COVID in the schools a little longer than everybody else potentially. So there's still a lot of unknowns um ahead. Our our budget process has held even with the things that have changed since we built it, and that's the good news. We expect that'll continue to be the case. Um, but just so you have a status update on where we are in the variables as they've evolved.
Great. Uh, next slide, please. So like the previous two um fiscal year budget processes, FY twenty-two's was also a zero-based budget process. Every line was started at zero and was built up. All class sizes were reviewed to approximate the number of staff that were needed. Uh, our software, PPE, contract services, special education tuitions, et cetera, were all built uh from zero. Next slide, please.
Jared, before you go on, I think it's worth remembering uh how we built FY twenty-one. Because as comparisons get made from twenty-one to twenty-two, I think it's just important that everyone note the variations and the COVID impacts. We built twenty-one twice um with a second round uh as close to town meeting last fall as we could over the summer. So if you're in budget books and you're looking year to year, zero-based, thank goodness, allows us to start clean and build up, and that mattered a lot as we built these budgets several times over. Um, but year to year with the COVID impacts, you're going to see some, you know, swings that truly are COVID-related. For example, professional development, we dropped because the only options available to teachers essentially were remote options, and those were less expensive as we anticipate more in-person opportunities returning. Some of those are bouncing back. We haven't had substitutes in the building all year, per diem substitutes. We've been just juggling to make that work. We need to bring them back in. Um, there's just a number of those types of impacts that as you look at the books, um, the numbers reflect all these different changes that keep happening.
Great. And so it's important to sort of point out, we've done six budgets now because we we do two, I would say, six budgets in the last eight or nine months. So we've been in budget mode for for a while.
Um, I don't think we've been out of budget mode is the way to say it.
Yeah, usually that's the best time of the year, but nine months, we're kind of tired. So we'll get through it. Uh, next slide, please. So we've identified one million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars in budget drivers made up of twelve expense categories. The first largest cost driver is teacher salaries. We are currently in negotiations with our teachers, uh but we but uh but the budgeted amount is up two point nine seven percent. As Dr. Hunter just said, we put back all of our substitute lines, and that was a budget driver uh and went up a hundred ninety-one thousand. Our softwares and hardware costs are increasing twenty-eight point six two percent. We've identified over one hundred and one different softwares um that we use. It doesn't mean we're funding them all, but we've identified that.
Yeah, Jared, can I talk on that a little bit?
Yep.
Yeah, so so we took our innovative world of software and all the the work we'd had with teachers to encourage them to use it and find new products and such, and knew we needed to really uh corral that and get it at a district systemic level. And then we had COVID impact where we needed innovation in a whole new way, and new things were brought in. So all of that proved to serve us well to get through uh the COVID era here where so much was remote, and we had to rely on the software for our instructional delivery exclusively. Um, as we start to move out of COVID, um, we are gonna have to maintain a portion of that, because when a classroom or a student is quarantined, which some are even as we speak, um we have to be able to to, you know, jockey back and forth between the two. Um, in elementary school, the whole class goes out, but we also know we really need to vet what we're using and how we're using it. Um, we want to hold on to the innovative parts, the really powerful educational tool components, and start to wean off of a screen-based classroom as kids are together and in person and um available to not need the technology extent exclusively. So that's work that's in progress. So just so you know, that number looks looks high, and it is, and we're we're actively engaged in that and have had a number of conversations with the School Committee as well. So you're going to see some ebbs and flows there as we come in and out of uh such an interesting uh unpredicted time for us that we want to hold on to the best and wean out of what we shouldn't be doing long-term and find that perfect balance.
Great. And next is the professional development that was put back. Contract services are up seven percent, but they were actually reduced in the FY twenty-one budget. The contract service request is actually a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars less than FY twenty's budget and two hundred and thirteen thousand less than FY nineteen. As part of the ten-year bus uh replacement plan, we have two new buses in this budget. Salaries for maintenance and custodians are increasing. Uh, we are in negotiations with both unions. We budgeted for an additional maintenance employee in the FY twenty budget but never filled that position. We did not budget the business, the position during the FY twenty-one budget process, but the need to add this position after the fact was apparent due to the additional duties arising from the pandemic. This budget includes an additional split maintenance employee that will hopefully allow us to continue to reduce our contract services. Next slide, please. Salaries for non-union employees have increased three point nine seven percent. Uh, twenty twenty thousand of this amount is actually uh part of the Mecca Coordinator's position that we've added. Um, in forty thousand of this position, uh forty thousand of that position is budgeted out of the Mecca Grant. Did you want to speak on that, Dr. Hunter?
Yeah, I think it's worth noting. Um, we have added a Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Um, and so it's a pretty exciting step for us. That's been a very big priority in the work we've been doing, and we want to further that. And now to have someone exclusively committed to that. So there is a built-in change there. Um, we've ended up promoting our Mecca Director, and now we're doing some reallocating. So the Jared's got the increases tracked through throughout the budget. Um, overall, it wasn't as much of an increase as it could have been because of the way we reallocated the Mecca structure. Um, but we're excited and think we're going to both serve Mecca students um thoroughly now. Um, we had some gaps across one or two schools and and have a real um upper leadership position focused on on equity and anti-racism and cultural competency, and we're just, we're really excited about what that potential brings us.
And utilities, uh utility utilities are going up uh three point three eight percent. And for a number of years, the parent-teacher group picked up the majority of the student activity costs at the middle school. This is no longer the case. As discussed uh during the entire budget process, we have a balance in this revolving account that is now starting to dry up. We created a new line in the FY twenty-one budget uh and allocated forty thousand towards these costs, knowing that we would have to come close to fully funding in FY twenty-two. We expect total cost to be approximately seventy thousand in FY twenty-two, and we do not anticipate to have much left in this revolving account. And therefore, it is showing up as a driver. Nurses' salaries are increasing uh as a whole, four point four one percent, but included in this amount is the CPS share of the lead nurse stipend. And lastly, uh, we put back um much of the field trip money that was taken out during the FY twenty-one budget.
Which is all COVID-related, that we cut it, and we're hoping our kids get to actually start going somewhere next year.
Great. And next uh next slide. So to offset um the budget drivers, we identified about seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in cost savings. Due to all the programs we have created in the work to keep kids in district, special education tuitions are down four hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars uh over the FY twenty-one budgeted amount. In addition, we increased our IDEA grant offset from four hundred thousand to four hundred and forty thousand. But because we are sending less kids out of district, our circuit breaker projected offset is decreasing ninety-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And for more information on what those are, we do have a glossary in the back of our budget book, and we try to explain some of these terms that um not everybody knows. The conquered uh share of the FY twenty-two case transportation assessment is decreasing one point seven nine percent. In addition, we are receiving a credit of a hundred and seventeen thousand. Due to these two factors, we are realizing a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar budget savings in this line. Case transportation assessments are based on the two fiscal years prior, which helps us to prepare for large swings. Uh, district-wide, the assistance in the tutor lines are decreasing a hundred and twenty-eight thousand over the FY twenty-one budgeted. And lastly, uh, we have seen the um the peak in the sick leave and the early retirement incentive. The sick leave buyback line is decreasing by over thirty thousand. In the early retirement incentive is decreasing over sixteen thousand. Teachers hired before the nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three school year are eligible to buy back fifty percent of their accumulated sick days, up to two hundred days or a max of forty-five thousand. Staff hired after nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three are eligible eligible to be, excuse me, eligible to be paid thirty-three point three three percent of their accumulated days or twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred uh dollars as a max. Teachers who were hired after um or during the two thousand four, two thousand five year are not eligible for sick leave buyback. Right now, we have about fourteen eligible teachers at CPS um in seventeen at the high school um for this benefit. Uh, in four of them, four of these were hired before nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three.
Jared, we've we probably want to just reference the overall savings of the early retirement.
That's actually.
It's not negated by what you just said. We actually still have saved hundreds of thousands per year. Um, so.
And that is actually the next slide.
Oh, look how good I am.
Yes, you did.
It was your segue.
Uh, here is a chart of our estimated savings due to the earlier time incentive. When someone retires, they're they are on the top of their uh their lane. And when we bring in their replacement, we try and get it to seventy-five thousand dollars or less, which is like a master's six, give or take. Um, and as you can see, these numbers really do speak for themselves. Next slide, please. And the uh the Concord Public Schools budget uh meets the um meets the Finance Committee guideline at two point two eight percent. Next slide. And again, uh, the recommended budget for FY twenty-two is forty-one million, seven hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And the overall increase is two point two eight percent. And that is that for the FY twenty-one budget. I lost you again. So.
Thank you, Jared and Laurie. Um, I've got a question. I have a few questions. My first question is about the buses. I see that you show fifty-seven thousand for two new buses. So is that over FY twenty-one?
And so that is the increased cost to lease two new buses.
Increase over what you spent in FY twenty-one?
Correct.
Okay, did you get in FY twenty-one, the two electric buses, the one that?
Yeah, so while that that I say this, I feel like I say this every time. We're still waiting. We're hoping uh we're hoping to get it, you know, I think by, Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm saying July at this point. We really don't know. Um, in the second um part of the the second VW grant portion has not even come out yet. So um, so we're hoping July, Ian, I know you've been following this and have been working with them. Is, do you have any updates?
Yeah, well, July is kind of what we're eyeing right now. There's been a lot of shutdowns. It's actually being built in Canada, and it's been a lot of shutdowns, and they don't have the vaccine distribution that we've had, so probably going to continue. So we're hoping July.
Uh, then I guess my question is, if you get these one or two buses, will you still need to have two more buses leased?
Yeah, so we we did like a ten-year repl- replacement cycle because a number of years um before I got here, I I I think there was a number of buses uh purchased, and there was no real cycle. So to get everything in a cycle, we're trying to do about two a year to replace the fleet and have them average about ten years. Uh, so but once we get this in the budget, it's gonna uh, we're now into maybe three years of our 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 plan. Once that money is set in the budget, we won't see really big huge increases.
Okay.
Go electric. Uh, it's important to note um at the high school, if we do get an electric bus that is eligible for Chapter seventy-one reimbursement up to seventy-five percent. Um, so that is something that we will be talking to the Committee, I'm sure, in in coming years. Uh, because it does make sense to purchase at the high school for electric. And if you purchase it outright, you'd get seventy-five percent back. Uh, and if you lease it, then you would get uh seventy-five percent of that lease cost after the first lease payment is paid.
Thank you. Um, my next question is about the middle school student activities that you, if I understood that correctly, these were activities that were funded by parents, and now do I understand that correctly? And now they're being brought back in and funded by on in the school budget. So what are these activities exactly?
Um, Ian, you're very close to those. You want to?
Yeah, it's all of our after-school clubs and things. Ian, do you want to add to that?
That's the the driver of the of the budget number. So the trips and things are student-funded. Those are still going to remain student-funded, the big trips, but um yeah, it's the after-school activities. That's the main cost.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I forget. How much was that again?
So the total amount uh that's going to be in the um, it the budget line is seventy thousand, and it increased, uh, I think it was around forty thousand. Um, so last year, FY twenty-one was the first year that we put it into the budget because we knew that these funds were starting to dry up, and we anticipate the fund by the end of this year to be mostly uh mostly dried up, and now it's going to be a a general fund uh source.
Okay, and my last question, and this is something I saw in the budget book. Thank you for that. Um, those are beautiful. Is um, I see that we spend about one point two million a year on integrated preschool?
Yes.
Okay, is that um, how is that funded? Is that?
Sure. So there i- it's funded, well, the general fund, and then the the tuition, um, the tuition offsets that. So the amount that is uh that we expect in tuition for next year um is about a hundred and forty thousand. That's actually an increase of seventy thousand based on our estimates in FY twenty-one's budget. So actually, that is a a budget savings. So what we do is we take that money, we show it as an offset, and then we immediately just charge teacher salaries to that. Um, and there'll be a zero balance at the end of the year. We won't, we don't carry any, we won't carry anything over. So if we.
I think it's it's just important to understand why we can charge tuition. Um, so it's a it's a it's a combined special education. So it's a, it's a, it's a combined special education and general education program. For special education students, we are mandated to provide that instruction and service with no charge per regulation. We do not have to offer yet, although the president's starting to talk about it, free public preschool. So when we bring in community children to enrich our classrooms and have, have integrated classrooms, we can charge them tuition. And that's where that funding source comes from. You may remember a couple, couple, two, three years ago, the funding was actually going back to your general fund, the Towns General Fund. We were able to have it come over to the schools, and now it's a direct offset to the preschool salaries. So you're, we're all benefiting from that application of those, those monies. We, we did pull it back some this past FY21 because with COVID, we were taking in many, many fewer community children. So revenues were obviously down. We're expecting full enrollment in the fall, and so we can push that back up.
Thank you. Kathy? You're muted.
Dr. Hunter, thank you very much for your presentation. My question for you has to do with your mention of diversity and inclusion. And I know that the schools were not in session during the social unrest of a year ago. What, what is your sense of what the community needs? What the students need to reconcile that unrest and to move forward in a positive manner? And my second part of that question is, how does the student body interact and embrace the the students that come in from the inner city?
Yeah, great questions. Thank you. You know, interesting times. Last June, we, we were not in session. We were fully remote, and we had a pretty substantial racial issue on social media among our students the same week of George Floyd's death. So we were navigating probably the most challenging racial environment I've ever lived as an administrator with all of our students home remotely. Very challenging. But we used Zoom, and we were able to communicate through all of our technical tools and really engage and get kids talking with us and parents talking with us, which really was a moment, I think, for the district in that we were able to take some groundwork that we had laid with different exposures to professional development and speakers and some, some, you know, openings of the conversation and begin to start to turn that to a really iterative dialogue where when we open up conversations now, we're starting, and I say starting because this is, this is a long journey. We're starting to have the really hard parts of the conversation. You know, you can do the, the speakers, and you can do the PD, and there's some really hard things to be said about what our students of color experience, both the kids from Boston and the kids from Concord and Carlisle, and what that feels like to be in our schools and how that works day-to-day for them. And also some really hard conversations for a white community to have about their role in anti-racism and cultural competency, and we're starting to have those conversations. So I think when I talk about the kids, you know, who are Boston population, we, we see them as, as our kids. And at the same time, we support them with the resources, Metco, the grant, and our general fund allows us with some academics, if they need it, some social emotional support if they need it. And we've learned to be really careful. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Just because you come out and then you're a Boston Metco student, there's a real range of who, who those kids are. And the one thing they have in common is real dedication to wanting to be in our schools. That is not an easy, easy life they live, getting up at the, well before dawn and getting home very late. You have to really want to be here, and they are very, very engaged with us. So it's a, it's a work in progress. It's going to be for a very long time. I feel like we're at the beginning of the heart of the work that actually changes culture where, if you don't have the hard conversations, you can't actually fix what's not working. And we're starting to have those. I'd love to, I could do that talk for a long time.
My last question, and again, this isn't on, on just bottom line, but how, so how do you see this promotion of this diversity person entering into and enriching the community?
Yes, so the, the vision really is that you have someone dedicated just to that work. Of course, that work doesn't stand in isolation. But by having someone with that as their sole focus, they get to be the ones really making sure that it's happening across all the curriculum, happening across our hiring processes as we try to become a more diverse staff, working with, with us on policy and communication, challenging us out of our comfort zones. I talked to the school committee about that last week, just in terms of, you know, we're really trying to message support and confront some of these difficult topics, even through, you know, on outgoing communication and how you approach that and what you say that's appropriate or not appropriate. For example, in the verdict of the George Floyd verdict that came in a couple of weeks ago, you know, really, really takes a little bit, a lot of courage, I'll say, as the person whose name's usually at the bottom. And that person, you know, this role, we'll already start to see support to all of that. So it's a lens on the entire district. It's also an out-facing piece to the community and feedback and relationships, out-facing to families, in-facing to students, and making sure those conversations are happening. And we're actually be introducing him in this role on Tuesday with some high-level vision and goals and how he's going to come in and really, really take on this, this, this really important work.
And, and if the committee will indulge me one more moment, do we have any diverse teachers in our schools?
Yep, it's a work in progress. We have, we have some, not enough is a major initiative for us even this spring. I have been hiring for the fall. It's a busy time of year for us to do that, and already we're, we're making some gains. So we've been working on our recruiting process and our, you know, how we reach those, those candidates and how we attract them to us and starting to see some success there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Kathy. Greg Gariello, do you have a question?
I got a question, Jared, about the software line item that you pointed out there. Being in the industry, that, that line seems a little low to me. I know how much the stuff costs. One was a lot of it covered by the COVID expenses, and two is that, you know, increase possibly, you know, for subscription, annual subscriptions? Because I don't know if you guys have Zoom annual subscriptions and/or hardware.
Correct. So yeah, that, that's for, it's for everything in the amount. So the total amount that we have budgeted in the, in the budget is about 712,000. The total increase is what is the driver. So the total increase, the total increase is 163,000. Of that, about 150, give or take, is, is, is the, is the software pieces due to COVID. But one thing that I want to remind everybody is, when we did this budget, some of this stuff was in other lines. They were in, you know, a lot of our textbooks are now subscriptions. Therefore, subscriptions is a software. So the textbook lines have gone down, and the software lines are going back up. And what we're doing this year is the amount that, so we, we did a zero-based software budget. And this is year one. So what we're doing is we, we got all of the data, identified what everybody is using. We had to come up with a budget amount. We did not go out and do the bidding yet. So once we, once one, that we do, we vet everything, then we're going to do the, the bidding for everything. And then we're going to know, okay, this is the first year. What are we actually spending? It's all in software lines and not integrated with all the other lines. And then each year, it will get better and better. But again, yeah, the total cost is, is about 712,000. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think I'd add a couple of things. One is we've definitely stabilized the hardware lines, so those aren't varying year to year and allowing us to keep our inventories within a five-year rotation cycle, or sometimes longer. We, we are a Mac district, as most of you know, and we, we are eking seven, eight years out of some of those machines. In terms of the software, some of it is the technology software tool itself, Zoom, or for our little kids. It's a different platform that's a little different and easier to navigate. So those, those are infrastructure pieces. Then there's the curriculum pieces, which Jared started to reference there. Some of it's been textbooks because we do buy most of our textbooks with an online subscription. There's often a hard copy in the classroom itself, but the kids all have individual access. And then there's also the productivity pieces, which is where kids get to be innovative in the products that they're generating and the tools that they're using. So we're, we're looking for, I think, a couple of goals. One is a systemic view to be more fiscally efficient about it because scale matters. I think two is to really look at this wide berth of tools. You know, the marketers are not, are very effective in allowing teachers access to things for free. And then to really get what you want, you have to pay for it. And we're really reining all that in. So even the free now has to come up through the central office because we don't want you, one, we want to vet it and know what you're using. And two, we don't want you to fall in love with it if we're not going to pay for it. And then the third is just really promoting the innovation part. And how do we help kids use technology for the tools that it really, you know, enhances things? And isn't just that replacement tool of, you know, reading a textbook online versus the hard copy. So it's multi-pronged, and Jared's right. This is, the beginning was to corral it all in one place. And now we're going to really be able to do that work and have already started with the teachers through department and grade level meetings.
And one thing, you know, I was even noticing that we might even do next year is separate the software and the hardware. We do in the budget lines. They're not combined. We have a hardware line for each elementary school, middle school, central office, and then we have software lines. So it could be a little misleading, you know, the increases, you know, to hardware and software because right now they're in one expense category. So maybe next year, we separate that and we show.
Yeah, and the, yeah, the budget book it was. Okay, great, thanks.
Good pressure.
First of all, thank you, Laurie and Jared and the school committee for coming under the guidelines. Back and forth and, and trade-offs. So thank you for that. I think you answered my first question around. Jared, you opened up and said something about the software is for remote learning enablement. And so I was kind of curious if that's the case, what the impact on the budget is if remote learning is going to decline. But it sounds like the software increase is more than just remote learning enablement. Is that correct? Just in the last 10 minutes, I don't need a full answer, but.
Sure. Turn that over to Laurie. She might know, she knows the software is.
Sure. So, you know, I think, and when the kids are fully remote, we need to have the ability to do everything that way. So that starts with, whether it's a Zoom platform that, we, we didn't have district subscriptions to June on March 12th of 2020. We do now, and those run grades three through 12. And we have a program called Seesaw for the younger grades, and it allows, allows an organized tool to, to access as well as Google Classroom, which we use for the older kids. So it's a combination of the actual virtual technology like Zoom. It's a combination of a learning platform so that it's got some organization to it. Seesaw and Google Classroom. Then there's the curriculum part, which is the, the resources as well as the, you know, productive tools. So that might be, I mean, we'd love to show you some of what's out there now. You know, there's all sorts of ways for kids to collaborate electronically, these sticky note programs, and they all post.
Sorry, interrupt. And my, my question's really basic. If we go back to full-time with no remote, do you expect that cost to decline? Or are these tools that you're planning to integrate and learn? That was my simple question.
Sure. So it's, it's, it's going to decline for sure. And the ones that still make sense to have in an in-person environment, that's what we're figuring out right now.
Okay, thank you. And then the second quick question. On the retirement slide, I noted that it said early retirement. So I'm kind of curious, is it truly early retirement? Teachers are leaving earlier than they're required to, or is it just retirement, their time is, you know, it's retirement time, they're leaving. Is there a mandatory retirement age?
No. So the early is about the fact that they're eligible, but they're still in the, in the classroom. The incentive has allowed them choices to maybe not stay in the classroom and go before maybe they thought they were going to go. And that's been a win for both of us, and you can see the fiscal benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Dean?
Yeah, just simply following up on the software question. I think the idea seems to be that as everybody's back in the classroom, a lot of that software is probably not that necessary. However, one of the, one of the points that you made earlier, Dr. Hunter, was that in the elementary schools, if there's COVID either in a family or in one of the children, the entire class is now back in remote mode. So even though we are going to go back to full in-person learning in the fall and would hope not to need that type of software, just an event like that would cause you to have to kick that into gear for that class. So you're gonna, you're probably going to need to keep those lines up for a little while, at least, I would think.
Yeah, they're going to come down gradually. I think that's correct.
Yeah. So, so my follow-up question, which is not a financial question, is, is there a point at which, at least at the high school level and even down at the middle school level, just like you have for measles or mumps or rubella, you can say, this is a mandated requirement. You got to be vaccinated to attend school. And, and if you aren't, we're sorry, you can't come in here because we don't want you to give measles to somebody who just is immunologically compromised and requires herd immunity to allow them to attend. Is that something that the state is looking at? Or what, what do we think about that?
That's a great question. We have not heard anything from the state on mandatory vaccinations. That doesn't mean it. I'll, I'll spare you my, my, my editorial on how this has gone. Typically, things are happening without any notice to us or, or three to four weeks after they needed to. So for me to say, I haven't heard anything, has turned into a pretty meaningless statement because there's been a number of major, major announcements this year that the superintendents weren't given information on until they happened. So the answer is, we don't know. We do know that last fall, they mandated the flu vaccine. We took that seriously. And two weeks before the deadline, they lifted the restriction and said, never mind, don't worry about it. So we don't know, Dean. It's a short answer.
Thank you.
Dee?
Thank you. I have a question for Laurie, for you, and also Jared for you. And it's really looking forward, looking to the next year. And I'd like, Laurie, for you to think about both the social and academic side of education. And what are your top three, I want to say, concerns or unknowns that you have on your mind? And Jared, the same question, but I want you to think about it from the standpoint of finances and operations.
That's a good, that's how we operate. I'll talk kids and he'll talk money. You know, from the student's side, you know, our first and foremost is the social emotional. There's just no question. It's been great to have them all back. And even as they're coming back, it, what an adjustment, you know? There's a lot of positive there, but to just go back to what we were doing, first of all, the safety protocols don't totally allow it. And second of all, they're learning how to be together again. So certainly, social, emotional, the isolation's had its, had its price for sure. And we had social and emotional crises prior to COVID and trying to now figure how all this melds back together with what COVID's impact has had, the pressure that the kids feel, and where, there were some positives here in COVID. Some, some pace of things slowed down, and that was a positive. So how do we meld all that? We're actually actively doing some feedback loops here, both with teachers, kids, and with parents, with teachers. We've got a verbal conversational protocol about what COVID brought, where the positives were, what were the challenges? What do we want to hold on to? With kids, we're about to implement the challenge success surveys. You've probably heard us talk challenge success over the years, which is really about high achieving schools and the balance to, to promote wellness among the high achievement. So we're surveying the kids for where they're at aggregate, and then the same for parents through one of our own surveys. So we're thinking that input's going to drive it. And, you know, academically, of course, we're still doing all that survey work, too. We're always collecting data on where kids are at and where those gaps are, adjusting curriculum for changes that happened this year. And even obviously 2020. I think things that we see as positives, we've prioritized skills differently than we have in the past. I think there's positives to that. Assessments have taken different forms. I think there's positives to that. And new and exciting ways to collaborate as well as how kids work and what they produce has changed. So. It's a mix of everything, Dee. It's a great question. Jared, what are yours?
Yeah, there is, there is a really good question. So I sort of have it through a financial lens as well as, you know, also being the director of operations sort of lens. I think that the biggest financial one is the unknowns. And that is why, you know. We are planning ahead to try and any, any Esser or COVID money that we receive, we're trying to make sure we have enough. To push forward to future years, not only FY22, but FY23. Trying to get ahead on the PPE. Et cetera, just the, the unknowns. The other one, the other thing I'd say truthfully is through operations continuing to make people feel safe at work. You know, making also, you know, students on buses and students in, in, in making sure, again, going back to the PPE, the cleanliness. Making sure we just keep the, the custodians and the maintenance staff trained. On how to, you know, continue to keep the, the, the buildings clean and sanitized. So, but the unknown scare me. I'm not going to lie. And that's why we are trying to bring as much emergency relief money over. Especially at the CPS side because we really don't have a contingency other than the special education contingency. But through, through the, the, what they call the emergency relief funds. We do have that, those grants that are really going to help us out and they're a lot less restrictive than they were with the CARES Act money. So I'd, I'd say I'm probably seeing a bunch of things, but.
That's just my last comment. We are more nimble, flexible, creative. Than we've ever been. And I don't think that goes away. So that's, those are huge strengths that address everything we mentioned. And the unity and collaboration has been the key to that. And that's not going away either. So.
Thanks for your honesty.
Thanks for asking.
Whit.
I just want to reiterate, thank you so much for. Staying within the budget guidelines, given the depth and the complexity of the budget. It's pretty remarkable. The amount of balance, balancing you've done to the budget. So congratulations on that. There was, there was a line item about collaborative, I think it was called collaborative tuition that went down over 70%. Yeah. What, what is, what is that? And how do you drive it down so much?
Well, first of all, I, I just want to say thank you to you guys for, for coming up. I mean, you, in a way you met us and we really appreciate that. So I just wanted to say that because that was the second or third time. You all thanked us for meeting the, the guideline. So collaborative tuitions are, we categorize tuitions out of, I think, three different lines. We have, we have collaborative tuitions, which is case, case collaborative. Those are the only. I think that that's the only collaborative tuitions that we have. So our sending tuitions to them are going down. If that is the case, we have mass state tuitions, which is everything else, but we also have out of state tuitions. And that's how Desi categorizes them by, by their function code. So for some reason, that's not ringing a bell that the collaboratives are going down. But if that is the case, that's just that the tuitions for. Case, case are going down.
The collaboratives are a public format of special education program where the public schools combined together were members of case. And it allows for creation of programs at some usually better costs. Versus a private special education setting, which is the other lines Jared was talking about. Very good, you know, very good schools and serving our kids very well. But sometimes the private ones have, have more cost.
Well, Spid was a separate line item too. So, I mean, you've talked before, Dr. Hunter, about how you brought the services in district. Which is great. So thank, thank you for that clarification.
And you are correct. The, the collaborative tuitions are actually going down 360,000.
Christine, wait, are you okay? Christine, do you have a question?
I do. Dr. Hunter, there was a discussion. A while back on the Edco Collaborative. And how it was having financial difficulties and potentially had some liability for.
Yeah.
The towns that remain, which I think we're one.
Yeah, that, that is not my happy topic, Christine. We are members of Edco Collaborative. I sit on the board, I sad to say, and we really have hit fiscal catastrophe here. And I wish I could give you the one point of where it happened. I think Edco. Case Collaborative has a very clean identity of being a special education program provider. Edco Collaborative had a very diverse array of focus areas. And I think some programs were carrying others and as those programs dried up. Only the non-real revenue ones were left and. The information, the fiscal management of the information was very late in getting to the board until it was really negative. We did vote to dissolve the Edco Collaborative at the board meeting in January. So we are in the process of undoing everything. There is a significant debt going around right now in FY21. So the districts are navigating payment on that. And there will be, you know, just dissolution fees as we go forward and manage all of the different. Aspects of Edco's, Edco's programming and. Just infrastructure, et cetera, with employees and, and such. It's a really frustrating situation, Christine, I would say. And we're not, we're one of 16 districts in this. Navigating it, we're staying very close. Or we have attorneys sitting through all of it with us and representing where needed. Pretty tricky, complicated situation. We do have fiscal liabilities there. So.
And is that at the CPS level or the high school? I don't know which of the two.
Both. We, both districts are members. In their own standing.
Okay.
Both.
And are there, is that gonna, should that be in the FY22 budget? And or are we assuming, we, we don't yet know what we would put aside for it?
We don't know. We're continuing to watch the. Rough numbers that they're giving us. We, we're honing in on the FY21. Obligations. That's the closest we've gotten. There's some variables there that. Could make a difference that we're hoping come out more positively than others as the, as the collaborative dissolves. It's a unique, Desi's never had, collaboratives have dissolved before, but never when they're in debt. So we are in completely uncharted territory here. Desi and a lot of legal input and. A lot of districts at the table navigating it.
How much debt is there?
For FY21, there's almost $2 million in debt.
In debt service or obligation?
Obligation. We were having a hard, we, I say we, it was the board. We were having a hard time keeping the doors open and there are kids in programs. We were having a hard time keeping the doors open back earlier this winter. So it's. It's, it's really frustrating. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Seeing no more questions from the finance committee, I'll open it up to the public. Christine, do we have any?
We do. Chris, can you promote Pamela Drit?
Yep. Ms. Drit, you are on the panel.
Pamela Drit, 13 Conca Green, Unit 4. Thank you very much. I noticed that, I want to follow up with Mary's question about the buses. Is there a plan to transfer the entire fleet to electric? Because I believe there should be. And does. The, the two new buses, those are leased rather than bought. Do we lease all the buses or do we buy them? And can we? What, what are the plans for transferring the entire bus fleet to electric?
I could go Lori or?
Why don't you start and then I'll add on.
So I, I would love to, to do a plan for an electric fleet. But right now the reality is there, you know, two and a half times the cost of the diesel buses. I think, you know, I think it's certainly worth putting a plan together. I do not think it's something that we could sustain right now in the general fund until those costs do go down. So that was, that is my answer to that. I also think that if we were going to buy a bus, it's sort of something that we would potentially buy at the end of the year and if there's some sort of surplus. If we were going to buy buses in the general fund budget, you're looking, you know, 120, 130,000. Per bus, maybe around that ballpark. So there would be, I would say a substantial increase to the general fund budget if we were to do that. I, I do know a number of years ago, like I said before, there, they, they did buy a number of buses, I think through capital. And that could be a route that we go. But through the general fund would be tough, although, yeah.
So there was, there's momentum, you know, there's bits of momentum. And I think to Pamela's point, we all want to corral that and get a bigger picture plan here. There's work, you'll remember there was a $200,000 Warren article at the last town meeting, and that's to build out some of the electric infrastructure out at the depot. Because right now we can sustain three buses. Where's Ian? I'm looking at him. Three electric buses, Ian?
Three, two.
All right. Yeah, we can sustain three right now.
We can sustain three right now. So we, we did receive some support there to build out that infrastructure because obviously that's going to be a, a threshold we have to. Be able to manage as well. We are encouraged to consider this. The, the state subsidy. I think pretty much once we start applying, if we were to apply at the regional level where the state subsidizes transportation. We'd probably buy a bus or two before they realize that we're using it and probably change the rules, but it's out there as an option. We're watching the VW grant all of the time and it's painfully slow, as you heard. The momentum there just really dried up. I don't know if you're paying attention, but the federal government did start to have some conversations last week about. Some major, you know, investment perhaps in electrifying the school bus fleets. So perhaps there's some, some more help to come. I think, you know, if we can get our heads post-COVID. It, it is something we're very interested in and we would love to continue that conversation.
You can also use it to, as battery backup for the, the new school solar systems. And it would be a benefit, not just the school district, but the entire town. There must be some way that we can. Invest in such things. That aren't limited to the school.
I know we've had conversations with CMLP about the battery storage, even just. Because there's solar arrays right there next to the bus depot and there is even a complimentary. High level schematic idea out there. So you're correct. We, we need to be able to get back to that and see how it all might come together.
Is there some group that is tasked with studying that sort of thing?
I mean, my honest answer is we had some momentum going and COVID has slowed that or stopped it at the moment. I absolutely want to put it back on the radar. Once we've gotten, gotten a little further past the pandemic.
Thanks. I encourage you to continue.
We agree, Pam.
Any other questions? Okay, should we move on to the next? Before we do that, I just want to interrupt us for a minute. We had a request before the meeting started to announce. Which elected officials were actually in the participants because we can't, they can't be seen. So Phil, I know you. You want to give us an update on who's in the audience?
Well, I think we have six elected officials. If you want, I can give. My list of people who I, I believe are elected officials who are currently participating, but.
That would be great.
Okay, so from the select board, we have Susan Bates. Terry Ackerman, Matt Johnson, and Linda Escobedo. We have, from the school board, we have Cynthia Rainey. And the town moderator, Carmen Reese. So that's a total of six.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to. The Concord Public Schools capital budget. That would be Article 29.
So Sarah Wilson, Chair of the Regional Committee is here. So I think she was going to just say a welcome. She is a Carlyle member being welcomed into Concord.
Actually, we're still on the capital budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead.
Cynthia, do you want to say anything?
Cynthia will, sure.
I just, I, I, you know, being in the capital planning task force, but that's not our charge, but still, I, I know we collaborate very closely. With the town manager on the capital plan. And it is, we usually have a $900,000 limit and we're, we hit that sweet spot pretty well. I don't think there's anything, if you're familiar with the capital plan from last year, that is dramatically different this year. But of course, I think Jared will go through the capital plan and. Does it have energy recovery units in it, Jared? It does, well, 80% of it. So, yeah. So our favorite acronym. So I'll let Jared take it away. Thank you.
Thanks Cynthia. Go ahead, Jared.
Great. This is gonna put the slides up. Excellent. There we go. So as part of the Concord Public Schools five-year capital plan, the district is requesting 900,000 to be expended under the direction of the school committee for remodeling, construction. Reconstructing or making extraordinary repairs, including original equipment in related work at various Concord Public Schools. Next slide, please. The 900,000 is part of the town manager's five-year capital plan with the debt service cost to be funded within the levy limit. Next slide, please. So items included in the capital plan is the continued energy recovery unit replacement project. This is year two. We're going to be doing year one actually this summer because we lost, we lost it last summer. So FY22 is we'll focus on the Thoreau Elementary School. There's also some money for some carpet and tile replacements, which is part of a four-year plan. The full five-year plan is in appendices in our budget book, if you're interested in seeing that. We would also like to start a phased-in approach with a new integrated playground at Thoreau. We all, we have some funding from the PTG for that. With the help of the town director of sustainability, Kate Hanley, CPS will be applying for a green communities grant. In fact, I believe we got it, but. We still are gonna, I think we got it, but to install four rooftop units at the Ripley building. We have money in there for engineering costs in a contingency, in a contingency of costs not covered by the grant. And then lastly, we have some paving to do at Ripley. And then money set aside for the puberty in the Sanborn unknown. So it's a contingency for anything that could. Go wrong, roofs, drainage, sewer.
Yeah, we just did probably the biggest portion of roof we've had to do in my four years. So. It's good when, it's great. We have those funds available.
But Dr. Hunter, Jared, can you just say while we're on that item, how much? We spent on that project approximately?
Sure.
Yeah, it was about 50,000. Ian, I'm remembering that correctly, aren't I? 50?
Yeah, it came in just under 50.
Yep. And we did that project. We were one day past vacation. So we finished it on the Monday after vacation. So we, because we had some, some weather, some bad weather the week of vacation, but the project was done. And it's holding up. So we're glad to get that done. Next slide, please. And again, the. The, the capital, five-year capital plan is 900,000 and is under the town manager's plan.
I think it's worth, you know, noting that a lot of that is energy related and that will breed some operational savings. We're really excited. The work at Ripley. will take a building that is not at all conservation-friendly and really upgrade it in, in a quicker fashion than we thought we'd be able to. And as will the ERUs out at the schools, so.
And we did drop some of our electrical bills. We anticipated some savings at Alcott for next year. I believe that is in the budget book. Yeah, so we, we are anticipating savings and we did estimate that in the budget book. In, in our budget to reflect the savings at Alcott.
Great, thank you. It's great to see you're making investments that will save money. I've got two questions. Number one, I see that you've got like $50,000 for both PBD and Sanborn. Is that enough?
Well, we hope so.
It has been so far, Mary. We're always crossing our fingers.
Okay. Do, so as you know, capital monies can only be used for the intent that they were, they were raised for. So if we use $30,000 at one school this year and 50 at the other, we can carry 20 over. So we can sort of build a little bit. We don't have a huge balance. But if we have a bad year, there might be something that, we might have some savings from the prior year. Right now, we hope that $50,000 is enough and for each school and hopefully in three years, we won't need that anymore.
Okay, my second question is, I was looking at your capital budget that you put in your budget book. It goes out to FY26 and I see it's straight $900,000 every year. So I'm wondering, do you apply zero-based budgeting principles to work up your capital budget?
We do, but I, I need to tell you, every year we do start over. So if you looked at my previous two ones, they, whilst the big-ticket items are sort of in there, we always knew the ERUs were going to be a big-ticket item. The boiler at Ripley has always been on our list. So we, we do, because the reason for that is, is if you saw my budget, my capital plan from last year, it's not the same exact thing. Every year, we do have new priorities, the trump ones that might have been in the prior year. So we, we do, we do zero-base it. And now that we have a facilities director that now he's finishing his second year. He's very, very, getting much more familiar with the buildings than he was, say, at this time last year. So I, I even think the FY23 capital plan will look a little bit different. But Ripley is going to start becoming a priority.
So you do zero-based budgeting, but you have a cap in your mind for the 900K? I guess, I guess I'm wondering how, if you're doing zero-based, it always hits the 900,000.
Sure, well, that's, that's true. So it is an estimate because we don't, when, when we were doing the ERUs, for instance, we did call a number of contractors to say, how much would this cost? So on the ERU front, because that's, you know, seventy percent of this capital plan, we knew that that would be our top level. Anything about, so if, if it comes in, it's say, you know, the, the six that we need to do it at Alcott, give or take. If, if, if that, you know, comes in under or over, we can, we can essentially apply that, hopefully under. We can apply that potentially to Willard. That's why we put it in an elementary ERUs instead of specifically saying the 665 is 100% for Thoreau. But we know right now, when I talk to Kerry LaFleur as part of our capital plan that, capital plan process. We know every year going in that it's going to be 900,000. So we try and get it right to that. It's probably a long way of saying that, but we feel it is a zero-based process.
And the other piece to that too is if a project does go over, we have to find room in the general fund for it, so.
That as well, yeah. So if the contingency is not enough for, say, the Sanborn or the PBD and we don't have anything from the prior year, we would use general fund expenses. And again, yeah, if the ERUs did go over that amount, we would have to use general fund monies for that.
Yeah, I would say, you know, we've done very well. Russ Hughes has brought a lot to us with really being able to solidly manage money. We have not been having to do that, so we, we've got a lot of confidence in the numbers we bring.
And, and one thing that we certainly have been doing a lot, a lot of, and, and we did do it quite a bit in my, my first year. But I've been with Mr. Hughes for the last two. We do a lot of preventative maintenance, things that we did not necessarily. Well, we have fairly new schools, but now even the high school is, is getting to a point that, you know, things are breaking down. And the preventative maintenance is saving us a lot of money. So we're, we're doing a lot of that. And, and we are putting together sort of just a list for the high school on some needs for the high school. So we're getting ahead of that in the building, you know, six, six years old.
Thank you. Parrishar.
Thanks, Mary. So let me ask the question in a slightly different way. Because the 900,000, I think, is a, almost like a planning limit where you're planning up to the 900. And it certainly sounds like you're leaving yourselves flexibility to slightly underspend or maybe overspend. Over the last two to three years, how much has actually been spent on capital projects that fall in this category? I, I don't need an answer now, but maybe that's something you can come back with. Because I think that, I think is a little bit maybe what Mary was driving. I was trying to understand that also because you're, you're asking for the full 900. I have no problem with that. But I'm just kind of curious, how much do we spend on capital projects in this category year over year?
Sure, and I can give you a short answer and then, and come back to you. For the FY21 capital, we're still spending it and that's going to go into the summer. So we're not going to know exactly yet. I do anticipate us to spend, you know, if not 100%, you know, 95% of that, especially because the contingency at the, at the, at the middle schools, you know, we just spent quite a bit on the roofs. And that's the one that we may try and carry some monies over. But we can certainly look into that and in some years, yes, some years there, there have been projects that we did not get to really prior to me. But that's something that I can certainly get some more.
When was the last time the limit was raised? How long has it been at 900,000?
Well, last year, we reduced it, I think, to 825 or 830. I thought one year it was at a million. I don't have that at the top of my head.
And we can send you the history. I'm pretty sure it was 800,000 my first year, which was FY18. So it's, it's been between the 800 and 900 in my four years.
Yep.
Parrishar.
Thank you.
Dean.
There we go. Carrie just turned on her camera, so she may have, she may have the history of what those annual numbers were. So I thought I'd concede to her for just a minute.
I was just going to say that it's been eight to $900,000 for a very long time. And I think the, I think the, the thought process behind it is that in the last decade plus, the town has spent more money in the school buildings and that the school buildings were newer, generally newer than the town buildings. And, and so the vast majority of the capital plan funding was going to the, the town side.
And we're always working, just so you know, some of our other thinking is to avoid bringing you a separate Warren article and to try to make it work within that, even if it takes us longer to accomplish. So there's a, that's the other big picture thinking that's always happening.
Carrie, is this debt within the levy limit?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So Dean, did you have another question?
Yeah, a comment and a question. So I'd just like to thank Jared and Lori. We're there at 14 hours for today. Started at 7:30, so.
We're still talking pretty cohesively. Yeah, you were there, Dean, so we're all.
It's a long day. And, and the last meeting like this was really, I had the same experience, but it didn't go as well, so. Anyway. So my, my question is, really kind of it's Parrish, Parrishar kind of stole my thunder. But have you accumulated a little bit of a buffer from, you know, a multi-year run of these contingency funds? Have, is there some kind of, you know, cushion that you've built up? Because you've been allocating some money for contingency ever since we've decided to more or less, you know, replace these buildings. And so we have to make them work, so we're putting contingency in every year. Is there a small buffer that you've accumulated at this point?
I believe so, and I, I'll defer to Ian, but like I said, the FY21 is not spent yet. And FY20, being my first year with the capital plan, I wish I prepared for that. I don't know how much was spent. Ian, do you know that off the top of your head at all?
Yeah, because of, because of the shutdown, we didn't use a lot of the FY20 money. But this year, it's been, we've been whittling away at that. So this summer, we'll have a better idea. But yeah, the roof project was a big hit to that buffer that we had built up, so. But I think we still have some.
It's never huge. We're always, it's more of a cash flow piece that just allows us that maybe to start a project that you've already, we've come in and brought it to you and there's an approval and we're just waiting for town meeting. Because our work mostly has to be over the summer and we got to go out to bid and get that all queued up. And with a little bit of cash, so we can bring you all the data. It's, it's just enough to keep things moving. Generally, COVID aside, COVID, we didn't get everything done and we're doubling back. But we certainly can give you that.
Thanks.
Okay, seeing no more questions from the finance committee. Oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
If this is a capital plan and this is part of a warrant article, then if money is allocated for the, what do they call them, the ERCs? If you have four of those and it's $600,000, if you don't spend $600,000 on that, that has to come back, right?
Technically, or it would have to be spent on the energy recovery units. It would have to be spent on that, energy recovery units, so.
But if you didn't spend all 600,000 in the energy recovery units, then on the four of them, then that money would, whatever you did not spend would have to come back.
I think technically, I think technically, but there's, or we could spend it on future ERU issues at the elementary schools. Because we're replacing the ones that are, that are broken, not, but not all of them.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions from the finance committee, I think we have, Christine, do we have a Q and A?
We do. If we can promote Pamela Drit, we have one question.
Mr. Drit, you're on the panel.
I, I never mind. I think you've all answered well enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Any other questions from the public? Okay, let's move on to our last article, Article 30. And I believe this is sponsored by the Concord Carlisle Regional School District School Committee. And Sarah Wilson, are you going to?
Hi.
Great.
I, I know everyone's eager to get onto this final article for tonight. But I just wanted to echo what Cynthia said and take a moment to thank everyone who contributed to putting together this FY22 Concord Carlisle Regional School District Budget. So thank you to the school committee members for attention to detail. And thank you to FinCom for your questions and your collaboration. And thank you very much to Jared, Ian, Lori, and your teams for being responsive and and we're really responsive and, and reflective in this unusual year, so.
Well said, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, Lori and Jared.
So I know the slides are going to come up, but just a little preface about where we are at the high school in terms of status COVID and looking forward. We were hybrid all year at the high school until April 26th, which meant half the kids were in and half at home at a time. April 26th, which obviously isn't very long ago, we just returned them all and are excited that they're all there. Similar to what I said about the middle school. You know, it's a work in progress and 1,300 kids is no small charge in, in a pandemic. Lunch is outside primarily unless it's raining and then we spread them out inside. Classrooms are back full with whatever normal class sizes. In some cases, it's upwards of, you know, closer to 20, 25, even a little more. So kids are spread out, but also less distanced. We're excited that a lot of our normal routines are coming back. The instrumental programs are starting to play for the first time in over a year. Athletics, we have run all year. We've been really pleased at being able to do that. The spring sports just started this week and they haven't played in two years, so we're excited to get them back on their fields. As, as I know, it goes without saying, every piece of what I just said comes with a whole layer of planning and execution and then turning on a dime when needed. And so you'll hear what assumptions we had when we built the budget and hear where we're at now. Similar, some are similar to the, the lower grades. And I'll let Jared take it from there and talk on anything that comes up.
So the recommended budget for FY22 is $35,759,374. Concord share of the assessment is $21,367,553 for the operating budget and $3,241,186 for debt. The overall budget is 2.29% higher than FY21's budget and it is at the Concord FinCom guideline. Next slide, please. So just like the CPS budget, at the time, we have been looking at a number of scenarios that could be on the table for the fall. Initially, we budgeted all, for all of them, but then we had to try to, try to accommodate for all the options, knowing that we would have to pick a preferred option. Once we were able to do that, again, the budget just came together. The first would be that everyone is back in person. Here we are, perhaps with some modifications. CARES, CARES Act money and the emergency relief money will be spent on all of our unknowns and I'll try and carry as much over as possible. This budget also does not include student supervisors, which is tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars full year.
Can I just comment on that, Jared? Those were really a result of teachers who could not return for the year initially. They have all been vaccinated and we are fully staffed and so those needs are not the same. So that's been an exciting piece of progress as this year's gone on.
The substitute lines were fully replenished as well as the professional development lines. We expect, we budgeted and expect a full return to athletics and co-curricular activities. And just like the CPS budget, software was broken up by department level here and will be managed again by the teaching and learning department. And it's also important to note about 80% of the software used is either because of COVID or is assisting with remote learning. Next slide, please. Just like the CPS budget and the prior two fiscal year budgets, this was a zero-based budget. Every line started at zero and is built up. We met with all of the department chairs and the administrators, the managers. It was a complete team effort. All class sizes were reviewed to the approximate number of staff that we needed. All software, again, PPE, contract services, special education costs, et cetera. They were all built from zero as well as the, the revenue side. The revenue side has to be built up on the region. Next slide, please. So we've identified $1,450,116 in budget drivers made up of 10, 10 cost categories. The first is our largest cast, largest cost category, which is the teachers. We are currently in negotiations with our teachers union and budgeted costs are up 4.7%. This does include a .8 FTE, Special Education Coordinator position. In FY21, we added an offset in the general fund for the CARES Act. In FY22, this is removed. And monies will be treated like a grant and separate from, from the operating budget. And for this reason, it's showing as a driver. Overall, our software and hardware lines are increasing 61.92%. We've identified about 113 different softwares we use in the budget for the curriculum software. We've identified about a hundred and thirteen different softwares we use. Uh, in the budget for the curriculum software is about a hundred and forty-nine thousand. The retirement pension assessment is increasing uh, just under ninety-two thousand. Overall, the nurse expense type is increasing ninety thousand uh, due to uh, an increase of a one point oh nurse um, in a new lead nursing stipend. Did you want to talk on that one?
Yes, please. Um, the nurse leader was put in this year and really we restructured. We had two different nurse leaders, one at K eight and one at the high school. We've regrouped that and now have a K twelve nurse, which is proving to be by far more effective and efficient. Um, for years, we've been watching the nurse number, the nursing ratios at the high school. We are under with two nurses, which is what we have now under, um, what the proposed ratio would be for school nurses to the population. Um, you know, COVID's given us a whole fresh look at the nursing role and looking at what they were doing. Obviously, this year they're doing something very different and we know before we were stretched and we know as kids are returning and we're already seeing it in the last two weeks. Um, the nurses have become a big part of not only the physical wellness of kids, but the, the social emotional wellness of kids. And so we have proposed an additional nurse for the high school um, to really make sure that office is flush. We do expect some COVID impact still to linger, although the gift of the high school is the kids should all have vaccinations available, but the paper trail in COVID has been um, something we underestimated between testing, contact tracing, vaccinations, um, it's really pretty relentless. So we're, we're, I think, becoming a more effective structure in the nurse's office and this is a piece of that.
The salaries for maintenance and custodians are increasing. Uh, we are in negotiations with uh, both unions. Uh, this budget includes an, an additional split maintenance employee uh, that uh, just like the CPS um, budget will hopefully allow us to continue to reduce our contract services line. We have two new bus leases in this budget. Next slide, please. The salary for support staff is going up seven point five percent, uh, but this also includes a one point oh MECO position. Um, the region's share of the case special education transportation costs have actually gone up point eight one percent based on the formula. This formula is uh, based on, again, the ridership of two years prior. Total assessed costs are going up only thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars because we are receiving a eighty-six thousand dollar credit. If we do not receive that credit, um, the total cost would have uh, gone up to about uh, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand or uh, an increase of a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And overall, contract services lines are up uh, district-wide, uh, or high school-wide, three point eight uh, percent. So again, we've identified just over uh, one point five, four, five million in total budget drivers. Next slide, please. We've identified seven hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars in cost savings made up of six cost categories. Overall, special, special education tuitions are down two hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. And the circuit breaker offset increased in additional twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Debt is decreased. The insurance expense category has gone down ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Included in this cost category is medical insurance for active employees and retirees. And that accounts for about ninety-seven percent of the cost. And smaller expenses such as public liability insurance and vehicle insurance are also in this cast, uh, cost category. Charter assessments uh, and school choice assessments are projected to go down a significant amount. The school choice enrollment has been dropping. Uh, we had seven sending pupils in FY eighteen. We are now down to just one. Uh, similar story with the charter enrollment. It went from four in FY twenty and to one uh, right now for FY twenty-two. The salary for assistants and tutors has decreased three point three seven FTEs based on FY twenty one's budgeted amount. Uh, the total budget savings in, for FY twenty-two is fifty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. The curriculum and textbooks lines are down forty-one point six percent. Many of these lines uh, went to fund digital uh, textbook subscriptions and software uh, in the past, uh, which, which are now budgeted in the software lines. So again, we've identified uh, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars in cost savings. Next slide, please. Just like the CPS budget, uh, here's a chart of our estimated savings due to the early retirement incentive. Again, when somebody retires, they are at the top of their lane and we try to bring in somebody at seventy-five thousand or less. And again, I think these numbers uh, speak for themselves. Next slide, please. Uh, other post-employment benefits. This table shows the region's funding schedule. Uh, this one's as of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. We do actually have an updated um, evaluation in, in our budget book, which is not much different than this. An FY twenty-two contribution of five hundred and forty-eight thousand is required to meet the determined twenty thirty-eight, one hundred percent funded target date. Uh, district administration recommends level funding, the OPEB contribu-, uh, country contributions at five hundred and fifty thousand through FY twenty-two in order to mitigate uh, the FY nineteen and FY twenty small underfunding amounts. Uh, it is important to note that um, the, the region does have, um, I believe, the highest OPEB balance of any region in the state. If not, we're number two, but I believe we are number one. Um, so we've been aggressive at funding this and um, it, it's a really good model. Um, and, and it's uh, my future, future um, person who takes my place is, is really gonna thank you all.
I just jumped in. Okay, can I jump in for a second? So, um, one of the things with the new valuation is they actually lowered our discount rate. We were at, I think we're at six point five and now we're at six point two five. So there is a note in there that we're at five fifty right now, but I think next year, we're gonna have to reevaluate that number. It's probably gonna have to go up a, a bit. It won't be a dramatic shift, but there will need to be adjustments to reflect that.
Hold on a minute. Great. And then in two years, when they do it again, it will, it will go back down. So that's usually how it happens. Uh, next slide, please. So again, some good news here. Uh, the region started the FY twenty um, with a balance of one million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars in their ex, in the excess and deficiency fund. We received five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand more in revenue than budgeted in FY twenty. Um, that's not typical, uh, but we will take it. Uh, we ended the year with a balance of just under sixty-eight thousand. We are using three hundred thousand to offset the uh, FY twenty-one budget, but this is a reserve to reduce amount. Therefore, uh, we are estimating that our E and D amount will be just at four point nine nine percent, right under the max. And we hope to end um, the FY twenty-two with uh, similar results. Next slide, please. As you know, assessments are based on the October one enrollment. Um, on October first, Concord had seventy-seven point three two percent of the students and Carlisle had twenty-two point six eight percent. Per the regional gr-, uh, agreement, these numbers drive everything. The top box shows the difference between FY twenty one's uh, assessment without debt and FY twenty-two's. Concord's amount has increased nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. The bottom box includes the decreased debt service uh, amount and overall, uh, overall Concord's assessment is increasing eight hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars over FY twenty one's amount. Next slide. So again, uh, the recommended budget for FY twenty-two is thirty-five million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Conference share of the assessments is twenty-one million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars for the operating portion and three million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars for debt. The overall budget is two point two nine percent higher than FY twenty one's. Um, and it is at the Concord Finance Committee guideline. And I believe that is it.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions from the finance committee? Wade.
Could you, can you talk about the, um, the food service budget? It, it strikes me that I guess two years ago, you were carrying a budget and now there's, there's no IM, there's a school revolving account. That seems, that covers a hundred percent of your cost.
It does. Um, so, well, we did have a loss, uh, a, a loss in the FY twenty one. Um, due to the, due to the, uh, due to the pandemic and, and we, we did um, pay all of our food service employees. We paid all of our employees last year. We did not uh, reduce anybody during the last three months. That, although we had no revenue. Uh, so we did have some general fund expenses in FY twenty one that is shown in the FY twenty one actuals. But our food service account is uh, is self-funding uh, pretty much one hundred percent. Um, that is atypical. Uh, there's, I walked into that. It, it's excellent that we do that. We have a wonderful food service program. Um, so we, um, I think, and so yeah, so it is, it is a revolving account. Um, was that Mr. Robinson that?
And what about other, others, are there students on subsidized lunch and where is that money accounted for?
Great. Uh, but I grabbed the beginning of that, Jared, because we're in such a unique time here. Um, that's a cash flow with the federal government. Usually, we get reimbursed. However, this year, and they have already announced going into twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, the federal government is subsidizing every student regardless of income level. So we have had a game-changing event happen there where we are now providing, providing lunch for any child that wants to participate and submitting for reimbursement. So no child is paying for lunch um, this year or into next year. So it's, it's all new and different now. Um, that's obviously keeping, you know, districts across the country able to serve, serve stably and not have to worry about all the, the variance of revenue and all that goes with it. And obviously, all kids in need are getting, getting served. So is new, new times for sure, but now it really is a big cash flow event with the federal government as we submit um, participation rates and they provide, provide subsidy.
Yep. In addition, they're doing that also on half days that we're gonna continue to take advantage of uh, next year as well. So it's, it's, it's a really great program.
Yeah, whole nother round of being creative and, you know, the restrictions there on how, how and how we could serve safely were substantial. So things are very different than they were pre-COVID.
I just had one more question. That's great. Um, so on the, the kind of the breakdown of health services and psychological services, if you can talk about, I know mental health is a real, you know, big issue, at least in the news it is. Um, yet as a budget item, it seems that the, the, the services have increased slightly for next year in the budget, though health services have gone up pretty dramatically. You talked about the rationale and thinking that went into that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, we're, we've been fortunate that we've been able to provide resources in, you know, true mental health providers with adjustment counselors and programs. Um, special education and regular education uh, that are supporting students with challenges in mental health. I think we've got one of the most uh, rich programs I've seen in a high school. Um, however, we also have needs that are really at a very unique individual level. So we're still building out a bit here in terms of our, our way of approaching this. Um, the nurses have become somewhat of a frontline primarily because access is so easy, right? Up until COVID, you could just go to the nurse and they were, they were there and it was not at all unusual. The nurse would be sort of that intake worker and then get the counselor. Um, so that's a piece of the thinking, um, because that has become such a portion of their, their role. Not one that they own entirely and don't, you know, uh, share and definitely delegate off to the professionals that are, are certified in that, but they, they are a frontline service provider for sure. Um, in terms of other ways, we address it. We're doing a lot of early identification at work to try to screen kids early. So we're servicing them before they're in crisis. There's a big difference between servicing a child who's in early stages of distress versus a child in full-burn crises. Um, that said, we're, we're getting deeper at both sides where we're getting kids with lower level needs and identifying those, but we're also, one of our regular education programs is com, is ex, fairly exclusively for hospitalized students as they re-enter to the high school. Um, and we just keep getting more and more creative here, trying to figure ways to, to approach and identify and give kids ways to tell us. One of the last comments I'll make is making sure we continue to reduce the stigma of all of this and um, let our kids tell us how they're feeling and that it's okay to not be okay every minute. And that's another big piece of the work. So it's layered for sure.
Thank you. Greg, you put your hand down. Are you okay?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask a question for clarification. Is the bus, uh, are those buses the same two buses? Uh, are those different ones?
Those are different. So we have a fleet.
Okay.
CPS and we have a, we have a, a high school fleet, but the, the high school fleet, the regional fleet, we do get uh, the reimbursement on. So we, we'll get chapter seventy-one reimbursement on these, um, on these two and every other lease payment that we make next year, we do get reimbursed on those as well.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Thank you. Parrishar.
Um, I had one question, but then it turned into two when Wade asked the question about the food services line. Um, let me go back to the food services piece. Uh, it sounds like because the federal government is in a sense reimbursing schools for, serve food for all kids. We've gotten a bit of a break for the last year, maybe next year as well. Uh, my question is, what happens when that money comes to a halt? Are we gonna, like, are we banking the money we would have spent or what are we doing with that?
We are. Um, so one of the things that we did anticipate, uh, well, we, I'll go back. And last year, one of the things, especially once we shut down, we knew that we were gonna lose food service money. So we had talked about and planned it, uh, planned to have um, uh, up to four or five months worth of expenses in our revolving account. And we're, we ended the year uh, with a very healthy balance. We did apply monies to the general fund to increase that balance uh, in anticipation of, uh, I mean, this year the revenues are not up. We're trying to just uh, get to zero um, and, and, you know, make a dollar. That is the goal, but we did anticipate not having, uh, I mean, the goal is not to make money um, at all. Uh, it's, it's supposed to be, the goal is to, to be self-sustaining if you can get there. Um, but not to really have any more than, they say six months is really the top. Uh, if you can get even one month, let alone three to six, it's, it's a really healthy food service balance. Um, so while we do not really need it to get any higher than what we carried over in the FY twenty one beginning of this year, uh, we did plan to um, try and have as much money in that revolving account as possible.
And, you know, that came with some thoughtfulness. We knew as we opened in September, we, our kids in the element, uh, we'll talk high schools since we're on the region. We knew the kids were hybrid. So we knew there wasn't any possible way to have the same revenues. So we, we laid people off. Um, we did not return all of our food service workers this fall. What we did smartly was not lay them off so deep that when all of a sudden all the kids were coming back a couple of weeks ago, we were staffed enough to be able to manage that. And some of that's because of the real wise organization of our food service manager who mastered the art of this prepackaged food. We are one of the few districts I've spoken to where we didn't go, because we have to prepackage and the, we can't serve the same hot meals we were. Uh, most districts have gone to fully processed foods. That's quick heat and throw it in the container. We are still hand-making stuff. Like, I, I'm so much, I was impressed before COVID. I'm really impressed this year with what he's been able to come up with because processed food's more expensive. What we're doing now is not only less expensive, but better for kids and healthier. And um, it's been a win all the way around. It's been partly why we're fiscally stable. But, I mean, this, talk about fluid. This has been all over the places. And I think that's partly why the subsidy arrived is at least you could count on reimbursement for the meals you serve. But when your meal count goes so low, it gets really, really challenging.
Yep. And my, my second question had to do with the E and D surplus. I know there's, uh, is it like up to a maximum of five percent we try to adhere to? Uh, my question is, over the last five to seven years, have we always hit that five percent or where, where have we stood and have we been in deficit in the last five or seven years?
So when I- So when I, when I think, I think when I started, we were around two, between 2.3 and 2.7. But the other thing that was happening is we were using, and we still do, but we were using a much greater amount of E and D to, to offset the budget, which is really not good practice. At some point, we, we do want to reduce that 300,000 that we do. That we use to reserve to reduce the budgets and, and it's just not good budget practice. There's got to be other ways to offset. But we, we, we did have a, we kind of had a five-year plan to get this to, to you really 5% or close to anything over three and a half, I consider healthy. And we had some really good luck in unexpected revenues.
I think you just called the pandemic, good luck, but I'll, I'll let that go. Yeah, Parrishar, when we, four years ago, we were taking out of E and D faster than we were putting in. And we've corrected that. And now we're close to the 5% limit, which is a, a state law. We can't go over five. So.
Okay, thank you.
It's late.
I know.
Yeah. So this is a follow-on to that question. So Jared, where do you think you're going to be? 63021. And at one point you were talking about potentially creating a, or asking the school committee to create a, a capital stabilization reserve because you might be over the 5%.
Sure. So I still anticipate a surplus. We do have a capital stabilization account. So that was created in either 1991 and 1993. So we do have that ability. One of the things right now, and I, you know, Ian is, manages all of our grants, all of our revolving accounts. And he's amazing at it. One of the things that's a year like no other, obviously, is all of the extra grants that we've gotten in, in trying to by 630, if not before, come up with, you know, within 2%, if not less of where we would think we would end, we will end. And a typical year, I could get to that right now. That is not where we're at. We do have a, a large, right now, we do have a very healthy, unencumbered balance at the, at the high school. But we're still, while the, now that we're back full-time, that is going to go down. I just don't know exactly how much yet. I would say by around the, the 25th of May, when we have a school commu, school community meeting, I will start giving the committee some idea of where I think we're going to end and some possible options. Possible options would be giving money back, reducing, which would be through the, reducing the assessments for next year. Putting money into the capital stabilization account. One thing that I, we, I'm sure will continue to do that we've done in the past is to prepay our special education tuitions. But you're very limited on what you can prepay. You can't prepay leases. You can't, you know, you could buy a bus, you could do stuff like that, but you can't prepay leases for next year. So it's a discussion that we're certainly going to have with the school committee in the coming weeks and I'll have a much better idea, but my stance has not changed that I do think that there will be a surplus.
Thank you.
Dean, do you have a question?
Uh, yes. We don't have an article this year for capital improvements at the district. There's been a lot of talk about needing to do something about that ring road. There's also an outstanding issue on the playing fields, which is that there's no ba- bathroom down near the high school playing, the high school stadium. Can you just give us some insight as to what the thinking is for the district in terms of addressing some of these capital needs that you don't have anything coming forward. But you know, there was also talk about trying to improve parking for students, et cetera, but that doesn't seem to be part of this year's warrant.
No. So on the school committee agenda on Tuesday, we're putting all, compiling all of the history of discussion of what might happen on the campus. The road is certainly a priority on that, that list. As well as a couple of small athletic pieces that have been addressed or needed to be addressed. Drainage on the softball field for one. But we need to make that plan and revisit it. That's, that's the goal on Tuesday night is to start that conversation. More in terms of priorities than finances, I think, at this point. And then we'll have to get to the, the fiscal part. So stay tuned. We're regrouping it as we speak.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, that will not be FY22.
No, 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 no. Any, no, correct. If, if, you know, this, the, the question is the strategy, right? And some of them are smaller amounts that we've been able to do a little, like this last one was 25 or 30,000. We could absorb that in the operating budget. But the big picture one's definitely not, no, not FY21.
I have a comment and a question. First of all, on OPEB, I'd like to congratulate you on the work that you've done on OPEB, especially after Matt Johnson's observation of what Minuteman is, is can afford. So I know you've been doing it and I know Carrie's been doing it at the, at the town level. So I think we're in great shape because of the work that you've done. I've got a question though about the salaries that I see that you've got a $660,000 increase for salaries. And out of that, I think I heard that there's only 0.8 FTE incremental. So the balance is.
Yeah. So, so we are in negotiations right now. But teacher, teacher increases, especially if they're on step and scale is, you know, is colder plus a percentage of what that step is. And usually that step is, I can't believe I'm forgetting this, I believe 4%. So for example, if, if colder is 2%, you know, anyone on step and scale gets a, a 6%. So what we did is, you know, we, we budgeted zero base and, and then obviously put aside a certain amount for negotiations that I really can't get too much into, but that 600,000 is the, is the CCHS, CCTA portion.
It's an estimate.
It's, it's an estimate that was zero based. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Finance Committee? Seeing none. Christine, do we have any questions from?
No, we do not, Mary.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Hunter. Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Cynthia. Thank, thank you, Sarah. The work you do is incredible. We really appreciate it and thanks for staying this late with us.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great night now.
Thanks.
You too.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, I need a motion from someone on the FinCom to close the hearing.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Let's go around. John Hickling.
Yes.
Mary Hartman, yes. Christine Reynolds.
Yes.
Parrishar Patel.
Yes.
Dee Ortner.
Yes.
Dean Banfield.
Yes.
Wade Rubenstein.
Yes.
Ray Andrews.
Yes.
Greg Ariello.
Yes.
Brian Taylor.
Yes.
Phil Swain.
Yes.
Dick Jameson.
Yes.
Lois Wassoff.
Yes.
Kathy Kocolo.
Yes.
Andrea Zoll.
Yes.
Great. Good. I don't know if we have people in the public, but the public hearing is now over. We're going into Finance Committee meeting. Again, you're welcome to stay with us. But the public hearing is, is now over. First item on our agenda for the Finance Committee meeting, we go over the warrant articles. I'd like to go over the warrant articles we heard tonight. And see if we can come to agreement on a recommendation that we, we would make on these. Uh, the first one we heard from was Article 34, the CPC appropriation recommendations. Any discussion? Any motion?
Move that the FinCom recommend affirmative action on the CPC article as printed in the warrant.
Second, great, good. I'm, I'm gonna go down and see how many we have for affirmative action and then I'll, I'll have a vote on that as a consent calendar. Okay. The second one would be the, um, the Minuteman Regional Tech High School District Budget. For, do I have a motion for affirmative action?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
Great. Okay, so that's. No, I'm not doing this right. I'm sorry. I'm tired. I've been up since 7:30 this morning.
Yeah, exactly.
This has been a great meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna go back to the CPC. We have a second. I'm gonna go around and take a vote on affirmative action. John Hickling.
Yes.
Thank you. Myself, Mary Hartman, yes. Christine.
Yes.
Parrishar.
Yes.
Dee Ortner.
Yes.
Dean Banfield.
Yes.
Wade Rubenstein.
Yes.
Ray Andrews.
Yes.
Brian Taylor.
Yes.
Greg Ariello.
Yes.
Phil Swain.
Yes, but Mary, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, you can.
I think we are going to have a consensus on affirmative action on all articles that we heard tonight. And my suggestion is that after this vote, I would move to to vote for affirmative action on all of the remaining articles we heard tonight.
Thank you. Good, good suggestion. Thank you for that. Let's finish up with this and then we'll do that for the next four. Lois Wassoff?
Yes.
Thank you. Dick Jameson?
Yes.
Kathy Kocolo?
Yes.
Andrea Zoll?
Yes.
Great. It's unanimous and the chair so declares. Now I would like to have a motion on affirmative action for the next four articles. The first being the Minuteman, the second being the Concord Public School Budget, the third being the Concord Public Schools Capital Budget, and the fourth being the Concord Carlisle Regional High School Budget. Do I have a motion for affirmative action? Do I have a second?
Yes. And, and, and let me just say, they are all within our guideline. So I think we can safely approve these with affirmative action.
I agree. I agree. So I have a second.
Comment, comment. I'm not sure the capital budget was in our guideline. Did we establish a capital budget for Article 29? I don't think.
No.
No, technically it's not in our guideline. It's in the finance policy that you know, a certain percent of our annual budget is allocated to capital spending. The debt service for, so it's, it's not part of the guideline, but it is part of our.
It was just a correction for what had said.
Okay, so I have a second for that and I'm gonna go around and, and take a vote again. John Hickling.
Yes.
Myself, Mary Hartman, yes. Christine Reynolds.
Yes.
Parrishar Patel.
Yes.
Dee Ortner.
Yes.
Dean Banfield.
Yes.
Wade Rubenstein.
Yes.
Ray Andrews.
Yes.
Brian Taylor.
Yes.
Greg Ariello.
Yes.
Phil Swain.
Yes.
Lois Wassoff.
Yes.
Dick Jameson.
Yes.
Kathy Kocolo.
Yes.
Andrea Zoll.
Yes.
It's unanimous and the chair so declares. We need to assign people to write something here for, for, for the FinCom report. So for the CPC, I'm assuming Christine, you'll write that for us. Great, thank you. For the Minuteman, I'm assuming Lois, you'll write that for us?
Yes.
Thank you. And for the Concord Public School Budget, Dee?
Yes.
And the Concord Public Schools Capital Budget?
Yes.
And the Concord Carlisle Regional High School?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. I just want to remind everyone that these write-ups have to be, we would like to have them no later than May 14th. Brian, I've got yours. Thank you very much. That looked great. But send them to Carrie and I and please copy Lois if you would and get those to us no later than May 14th. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to approve minutes. We've got three sets of minutes. We've got minutes from the February 25th guideline meeting, the February 25th, the regular meeting, and then another set which I can't find right now. Do I have any?
I just have one, I have one edit on the March 25th regular meeting, Mary.
Okay.
It's an easy one, I think. It's on page three and it's in my observer report on CPC. In the last line, it says, based on the historic resources study, that should say structures, historic structures.
Chris, help me out by here. It's the March 25th?
Yeah.
And it's page three?
I'm sorry, February 23rd.
Oh, February 25th. Okay, February 25th, the regular meeting?
Regular meeting, observers reports.
Yep.
You see the last line, it says historic resources study. That should say structures. It's a historic structure study.
Okay.
It just, I, I must have said the wrong word. I don't know. That's what, that was it. That's all I had on, on the minutes.
Okay, Anita, you're still with us, right?
Yes.
Great. Any other, Dee? Dee?
I have a, a question for Carrie and then a correction on one of the minutes. And for Carrie, my question is, are, is our bond rating according to Moody's or the other one?
Our bond rating is with Moody's.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, so I don't have any other comment associated with that, but in the March 25th minutes on the last page, it says that there's, the motion to adjourn is made by Ortner and I would like to have Ms. Ortner in there instead of just Ortner. Because the person who seconded has Mr. in front of his name as well. So for consistency purposes. That's all.
Do we just take out the Mr. from that name?
Well, you could do that, Parrishar. But what's interesting is every time in a discussion, it's always prefaced by either Ms. or Mr. And then when we vote, it's just last names.
Okay. Any other comments?
That was just my mistake. I'm sorry.
Any other corrections?
I have one, I have one other one. Sorry. I forgot I had another one. It's on that exact space, the exact place where Dee was. It's on the last page of that, uh, March 25th. It has in the, in the, uh, the penultimate paragraph there that starts Abby White. In the third line, it says, and it's talking about me, Ms. Reynolds, blah, blah, blah. And she has asked the middle school building committee to consider any future use of the property. I was actually, I've actually asked that of the town manager, not of the middle school building committee.
Okay.
Yep.
It should just say, I think, that's what I would say. Thanks. Got it.
Any other corrections to the minutes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the three sets of minutes with the changes that we've discussed?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Great. I'll go around. John Hickling.
Yes.
Mary Hartman, yes. Christine Reynolds.
Yes.
Parrishar Patel.
Yes.
Dee Ortner.
Yes.
Dean Banfield.
Yes.
Wade Rubenstein.
Yes.
Ray Andrews.
Yes.
Brian Taylor.
Yes.
Greg Ariello.
Yes.
Phil Swain.
Yes.
Lois Wassoff. Dick Jameson.
Yes.
Kathy Kocolo.
Yes.
Andrea Zoll.
Yes.
Very good. Unanimous. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda would be an update of the Concord Middle School. Both Dean and I were at the Concord Middle School Building Committee meeting this morning and I will give my observations and then Dean can, can chime in or contradict me, whatever he decides to do. I, you might've seen the letter that the select board wrote to the middle school building committee, asking them to stay within the $100 million budget to the extent possible. And I think they put that qualifier in there so that they could get a unanimous vote on the select board. Um, the, the middle school building committee, I think, took that seriously. And I would say that I think that things are moving in the right direction. Compromises are being made by both the administration and, um, and I think the other interested parties, if you had asked me two months ago, I would have said that we were going in the wrong direction. And I think right now we are going in the right direction. So I feel, I feel, I feel good about that. So with that, Dean, I'll turn it over to you. Do you want to make any other comments?
You know, I don't have anything really more to add to that. I do think that the, that today's meeting was a little bit choppy. That we're trying to, we're trying to work through extremely detailed specifications of how large a basketball court can be, how many seats can be in a, you know, in an auditorium and whether they're portable seats and can be removed. So the orchestras can be there and whether that's part of the fire code. These kinds of highly detailed conversations are very hard to conduct with 15 members on the committee or however large, it's a very large committee. So I felt as though the, the committee did kind of what it could do trying to tackle a problem. uh problems that were really something that should be tackled on a much smaller scale with a smaller number of people who are willing to dive into the, you know, the nitty gritty of some of these numbers. Uh, because without being able to really engage with them, people are are left with the fallback position. Oh, it's part of the ed plan, so I just support that. Don't touch that. But you you to, in order to get into these levels of detail, you really have to scratch around and look at them. And and so at this 15-member uh committee level, it's very difficult to do such an investigation or a, you know, a little legitimate that, you know, work. So I, it, Mary is absolutely correct. It's going in the right direction, but you know, they're still probably looking at somewhere around 103. That's where it seems like it's gonna, you know, end up 102, 103.
I just want to emphasize, though, that the ed plan did change. Um, there were some concessions made.
There were concessions made.
There were. So we need to, I mean, I, I just need to recognize that.
Yep.
And I think that was a big mover. That moved things to, for me. And I think, and I think that's what I witnessed in the, in the room this morning. John?
Yes, thank you, Mary. I just wanted to point out to the committee that um I observed, uh you know, just as a a citizen, the Select Board meeting on on Monday. And the public comment that I made was that um I thought that this current discussion, um, you know, made uh the um the point of possibly using the surplus PBD property as some sort of uh stabilization fund to monetize it in some fashion acceptable to the community and town meeting, you know, um uh to help, help defray some of the costs of of the new middle, middle school was even more imperative now than it had been in the past. So I just wanted to share that with you all.
Did they say anything?
Well, typically, typically, they don't really, there's a reason it's called public comments and not public questions. So typically, they say, oh, well, thank you. Thank you very much. Who's next? Right?
No. That's a, that's a great segue, John. I know that this committee tasked me to write a letter to the Select Board outlining some suggestions for mitigating the cost of the middle school. And I haven't done that yet because I wanted the first letter that we wrote to kind of work its way through their conversation. So now we've got another letter that I am going to um draft and send to the Select Board with some of our ideas. So this will be another um, you know, reminder to the Select Board, because this is a Select Board decision, really. So it'll be another reminder to them of some of the ideas that we have that they might want to consider to mitigate the cost. Lois?
Yeah, just briefly, um, to John's point, this came up um in an earlier presentation to us. Um, and I think the issue really had to do with timing because of the way the fact that that building will be in use until the new building is completed. There was a real timing issue about how you could apply the proceeds of any sale of that property to offset the costs of the new property. So I just wanted to put a pin in that. Um, it did come up. There was an answer given. I don't understand the accounting well enough to know whether or not that could be managed in some way, but that was the response we were given when this was raised before this committee.
No, that's, that's fair enough comment. Uh, Lo- Lois, if I, if I may, Madam Chair, just point out that that doesn't mean there can't be a plan in place. Nobody's talking about kicking out students from or teachers from any school that's still in use. But that doesn't mean there can't be a plan.
Any other comments, questions about the ongoing Concord Middle School? Thank you, Lois. Uh Andrea?
Um, this is, this is just a comment. I'm not even sure it's appropriate. Um, going back to something that was briefly touched on um with Min- um Minuteman um regional. Um, the question came up about um making money from leasing the facilities. And um it, it, it was brief, very briefly mentioned, I'm not even sure everybody heard it, had, had to do with location. You know, why, why would the Celtics want to have a camp there or, or why would, why would there be such a demand? And I, I really feel that very strongly that it is location, location, location. There is a big difference between being right virtually on a major highway um with a, a really good access to the facilities as opposed to being, you know, out in residential areas in Concord. So I, I'm, i- it's just a comment that I think the location of Sanborn would not lend itself to this, you know, everybody rushing to lease the premises, or rent out the premises, uh because it is not real easy to get to. That's it.
Good point. I think that would be something that the school committee would like to hear as well. Barashar, you have a comment?
Yeah, just, you know, I asked that question, um Andrea, without really knowing what the answer was. And the reason I asked the question is we heard from the, what is it, Concord Carlisle Youth Association, Youth Basketball Association about, you know, why they were in favor of an expanded gymnasium because there's this such demand, not a lot of space. So it occurred to me to ask the high school, geez, you guys have basketball courts, are you generating demand? And, you know, maybe location does have something to do with it, but I, I, I just want to get an additional piece of evidence, if you will, out there to see, geez, is there that demand? And so that, that was in the context of um of, of why I asked the question. I think the, from my perspective, the answer I took away about the Celtics has less to do with the fact that they're on a main street and more has to do with they're in the burbs and like to get out in the region versus having kids having to go into Boston Garden where the Celtics typically practice. That, that's what I took away from the location. Now, I didn't tie the location to demand that they're seeing from other organizations to rent the facility. That was my interpretation.
And I agree with you, Chris Shara. Um, I, I, I think his comment, um, it was a good question, and I think his comments kind of validated that we can generate revenue from these facilities.
Christine, you have your hand up.
I do. Um, just, just a timing question. So I think um so today, the, the building committee met and I think very shortly, they want to have um this decision made. So i- in terms of timing, do you expect that at the next meeting they will conclude this? How much time is there it to, for them to finalize the number? I guess is where I'm, where I'm at.
I believe they want to go into schematic design um pretty soon. Dean, actually, you, you might be able to answer this.
Uh, their, their next meeting, I believe, is the final vote to, you know, cut off this conversation.
And that'll be one week.
There's, they've established, they've really, at this point, established no process. Um, there's been a concession of a certain number of square feet uh by the administration. The administration identified two room spaces within the space and that, and the aggregate square footage that those spaces represent is now considered to be a concession by the administration. Now, those may, they may save those spaces and concede other square feet somewhere else, but the, how that sausage gets made is at this point completely undefined. And how they get from here till their meeting next week where they want to vote and literally tell the architects, get going, draw us a, draw us a school that meets this square footage and has these spaces. There's no defined process at the moment, from my perspective.
I agree. That's what I heard as well. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions about this agenda item?
No, I just have a question. Did they really talk about we need to have whatever the structure is so that it passes at town meeting or whenever they have special town meeting?
Um, in the background, I think they, they're aware of that. And I've heard comments, not, not this morning, but last week, that they're aware that um, you know, has to pass a town meeting and at the ballot.
There, there's a sort of countervailing fear, which is that if they don't go, quote, big enough, that there will be a revolt from uh those who would take advantage of the building and saying, it isn't good enough. We're gonna, we're gonna not vote for it. Um, the example being um Willard was supposed to be a renovation and it was voted down until, you know, equity had been established so that it was a full rebuild. So, you know, there's some concern on the part of some members that you, you need to go big, or you'll lose some of the core constituency that you need to vote for it, which is your parents who are expecting, you know, uh, a large, a large system school. So
Okay.
Uh, you know, there's counter, there's, there's cross currents in that, on that committee right now, in that regard. You know, there's some who
Okay.
you know, do, who are taking very seriously the messaging that they receive from both the Finance Committee and the Select Board that 100 was something that they really need to work at. Uh, so there are some members who take that very seriously, but there are others who have this sense that you know, the people who really want this and need this building really want it much bigger than this and and will lose them if we don't, and if we don't go bigger than we are. So, you know, it's a real, it's, so there's tension there. There's tension.
Okay.
Any other comments? I think we have a, well, I'm gonna wait for public comment to, to answer. Um, I need to get a sense from the board now from, I mean, from this committee. We have some warrant articles that we deferred from our hearing last Thursday. And we've got one, two, three, four articles that we deferred because we thought we needed to discuss them. So I need a feeling from this committee right now. Do you want to stay here tonight and discuss them? I'm hearing, wait, shake his head, no. Okay, okay. We had originally agreed that we were going to stay late and avoid having a May 14th meeting. And now I'm thinking that might have not been a good idea. And I'm wondering if we should in fact have a May 13th meeting. Any of these articles that are deferred, we can have a more robust and more thorough discussion when we're fresh. Um, and also, we've also got um an email from I think it was Jake Swenson, who's um the Climate Action Advisory Board wants to give us a presentation on an article that um his group is sponsoring. So I'm, I'm putting it out there as far as do, how, how do people feel about doing that as opposed to tackling um articles that require um discussions and thoughtful conversation at the end of these long presentations?
Madam Chair, uh, I'm on my 14th hour of Zoom today, so I would highly recommend that we defer this to next Thursday. I, I can't in good conscience start contemplating four articles at 10:45 at night. So if we can do this Thursday, I, I would welcome that. Um.
I guess, Brian, I'm asking, I'm asking something different. I'm saying, what if next Thursday, or next Tuesday, actually, we've got many more articles? If we will be in the same place we're at right now, which is we're kind of overloaded, and if we should in fact hold a meeting on May 13th, which we
Is there a possibility for us to front-end this as opposed to back-ending this? So maybe we get together a little earlier on Tuesday to discuss or?
Yes, I, yes, yeah.
I was gonna suggest something different, Brian.
I second that emotion.
Is it possible for us, in a one-way conversation with Carrie, to give Carrie a sense of how strongly we feel about discussing each one of these? And sort of rank, in a one-way conversation, it's not possible to let Carrie know?
No, we know. Oh, no, it's a conversation that we need to have as a committee.
No, no, that's it. So what I'm suggesting is try to prioritize, Mary. The ones where we feel we're gonna have the most discussion
Yep.
last, but the ones where only one or two people want to speak to, just get those over, over with. That's what I'm trying to figure out if we can do that.
Do that when, Parashar?
Do that n- next meeting. Like, so in other words, right off the meeting, there's two articles where two people want to speak, let's just get to them and get them out of the way. And then save the other ones for discussion later, because
Okay.
otherwise, we're, we're gonna end up in the same boat, I'm afraid.
Okay, Andrea, I want to hear from you.
I, I, um, I, I would like to make a motion that we have a meeting on the 13th and um discuss everything that we need to ha- to discuss. Um, all the articles that we need to go over uh and anything that we need to go over from Tuesday, because Tuesday could run late also. Um.
Yes. I would be willing to do that.
Because I'm done tonight. My back is done.
Can I have a show of hands as far as how many people would be able to make a, a May 13th meeting?
Mary?
Somebody's yelling at me.
It's, it's Carrie.
Carrie.
I just wanted to remind you that the Planning Board public hearing is May 13th.
Oh, you're right.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to get your attention earlier.
Mary?
Is the public hearing, Planning Board public hearing?
Seven.
Seven, seven P M.
Why don't we start at six o'clock on Tuesday? And see what we can accomplish in the first hour?
How many people can make six o'clock on Tuesday?
We have enough time to post the meeting, though?
Yes. We do, don't we, Carrie? Tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think if we limit, if we limit discussion to 20 minutes per warrant, I mean, can we, can we limit discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So if we do that, 20 minutes per item, we'll get through it.
Well, we need 15 minutes per item, but that's Okay. Okay, I see a lot of people nodding their heads that that sounds like a good idea. Six o'clock next Tuesday would be our next meeting and hopefully we get everything. That's gonna be, still gonna be a long night.
It's gonna be a long night. Can we do it on a Wednesday or any other night?
No.
No.
It's not gonna be long if we keep our mouths shut.
We're talking to you, Barashar.
I know, I know.
Okay.
I, I was just gonna suggest that maybe after we have the discussion on the articles on um whatever date, the, the 11th, because we've added two more articles to that evening, 18 and 19. So if we, at the end of the presentations, if we just say 10 or 15 minutes per discussion on any of those articles as well.
If we don't have affirmative action right off the bat. Yeah, yeah. Yep. That works.
Ma- Mary, are the other, y- you've got the senior housing articles and the other two were the, the personnel articles, weren't they? Were they, does that make up the four?
Yes, okay, the two personnel boards, the one was the budget line item adjustments. That was
Okay.
And the third was, I mean, the fourth was the affordable housing from free cash.
Okay, so I think the, I think the personnel board one, that that discussion should go pretty quickly. You're either gonna say, you're either gonna affirm or you're gonna take no position.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And um, can we make can we make guidelines for ourselves based on the materiality of the item in terms of how, how much dollars are at stake?
Well, I think that would go into each person's position on that, but I think I can hold the conversation to 15 minutes. And as Dick points out, we may not even need 15 minutes. So what are you suggesting?
Well, well, Mary, Mary, I mean, I think if, if people have questions, those should be formulating now. So between now and Tuesday, people should just be prepared to, to ask their questions and, and be ready to talk about it. If you don't have questions, then, or if you don't really have anything to say, then don't say anything. So we can keep moving things along here.
Okay.
So um let's uh, let's move things along.
Okay, let's meet next week, Tuesday at six o'clock. It will discuss the four articles that we deferred and we'll talk about anything else we want to talk about until the public hearing starts at seven. And then after we hear the articles that are on the agenda, then we'll discuss immediately afterwards our position and we'll hold that discussion. If any of them need discussion, we'll hold that discussion to 15 minutes per article. Okay?
Sounds very reasonable.
I like that motion.
John?
So, so Mary, I've done the work on 18 and 19, if anyone's interested. Those should go very quickly, in my opinion. So, so Mary, I've done the work on eighteen and nineteen, if anyone's interested. Those should go very quickly, in my opinion.
Okay, great. Good to know.
You mean our discussion of the, of.
Yes.
Great. That's, that's great. That's, so we might get to bed by midnight next Tuesday.
Carrie, will you send us an invite starting at six o'clock?
I will do that. I'll send tomorrow.
Great.
John allowed to do, is John allowed to share his research with all of us or no, beforehand, so we can read it?
He can send it to Carrie. And she can distribute.
Yes.
Go ahead, John.
So I attended their meeting and I helped them with their, with their slide deck and discussed many of the issues. And I think I might possibly be in a position to abbreviate the discussion.
Good.
Sounds good.
But before we sign off, I just want to remind everyone that we did send out a, a a briefer this year estimate form. So please, you know, just think about those things and get them back. And we'll turn the crank and figure out what our five-year estimate looks like. So.
Okay, very good. We have a plan. We're gonna meet next week at six o'clock and we're gonna get through all the articles before we adjourn on Tuesday night.
So.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
We're gonna go around. Andrea?
Yes.
Myself, Mary Hartman, yes. Greg Rariello.
Yes.
Lee Ortner.
Yes.
Dean Banfield.
Yes.
Wade Rubenstein. Ray Andrews.
Yes.
Brian Taylor.
Yes.
Christine Reynolds.
Yes.
Phil Swain.
Yes.
Preshar Patel.
Yes.
Lois Wasoff.
Yes.
Dick Jamison.
Yes.
Kathy Kokolo.
Yes.
John Hickling.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. We'll see you on Tuesday. Good night.
That yawn, Anita.